Okay. Scroll up, I can see more people. Okay, everybody, a quick call, make sure we've got everybody here, so Annie, Hugh, Mike, Dan, and I'm looking for Phil. Don't see him. Okay, all right, we're just going to go ahead and get started. So tonight's workshop discussion is on workshops, I guess. Not a much better way to say it.
Are we having a meeting about meetings?
Yes, we are having a meeting about meetings. Hopefully, we won't have to do it again. So you'll see on your screen, we're sharing the list of requests from the council with regard to workshop topics during discussions with staff and Mayor Protem. I just thought it was a good idea to get everybody together, let's look at these things instead of continuing to kick the can down the road. I thought we'd kind of maybe go through each one of these and determine, A, if the person requests it still wants to go over it, or does the rest of the council want to go over that? And then B, let's start putting schedules together with regards to dates, so we can tackle these items. If you need help, me. So if we want, we can just start at the top. We've got financial investment and policy workshop requested by council member receivers. So if you do want it from the council on that topic, and then we can look and see how soon or how late we might want to put that in the schedule.
Sure. Open this, we probably were something that came out of it. The idea on the investment, investment and both investment and financial policies, was there a couple of pieces in there? That some point in the past, it was brought up that we might consider earmarking a part of the, a part of our city revenue specifically for police department. We already have those for the library. And sort of if we're doing it for the library, why aren't we doing it for the police department? If we're going to do it, if we're not going to do it for the police department, I thought it would just be a healthy discussion also on the investment policy, just to bring it up and make sure we all still agree with how the policy is written, how our city dollars are invested, whether or not there are potentially better or different alternatives for that. So I think it'd be an important conversation for the council to have sooner versus later is the way I'd put it. But I don't see there being a particular rush on this. Where early, I don't think it would change anything until budget cycle. So I would think it'd be okay to push out a couple of months if there are more pressing issues. And I, I do think that there are more pressing issues at hand right now, so.
Okay, so here's what I'm thinking after hearing those two. What do you, why don't we take each topic and just have each person kind of describe what you were thinking about when you were asking for it? We'll take some notes, those two, you know, what that person's mind line thoughts were. And then let's send it out in an email and let everybody kind of weigh in with a ranking, and then we can decide based on that ranking which ones we're going to tackle first instead of trying and then we'll get that out and hopefully we can have some date, tentative dates at the next meeting. The next one online was the community sculpture presentation.
Sure, Parks and Arches Commission came and presented some very preliminary concepts and said they were too early to have full police, how a sculpture might be installed, where it might be installed, what it might look like. And it sounded to me, if I remember correctly, that it was going to be more of a long-term plan, that there'd be maybe an initial installation somewhere in the city, followed by a series of others, and they may be under similar theme to each other. And anyway, they were just starting to vet out a process there. They, they put in a lot of legwork. So I thought this was, this is one that I do think we should get on the agenda sooner versus later, because we've got a group of people that are trying to push down towards this. And at some point, we're going to, we're going to be the ones holding them up.
Okay, great, thank you. That one? If not, we'll move on. Go ahead, council member Dunn.
Hey, yeah, no, I just, I support acting on inputs based on our volunteer commissions. Give it priority and yeah, more sooner than later.
Okay. All right. Did, were you, was Phil trying to get done, is that what you?
Yeah, so we sent, Todd's going to help us send Phil a link.
Okay, great. All right, so unless there's any other comments on that one, we've got follow-up special regard regarding Robert's rules of order, Mayor Protem Kennedy.
Yeah, thanks, guys, appreciate it.
And if you, I, I didn't know if you want to put that together with the next one as well.
I'll refer to both of those. Yeah, I agree with the comments so far from Hugh, you know, actually, all of these are somewhat of a priority. It's just a matter of how big of a, address these things and, you know, and work them all in. For me, the critical things are the next two really we're looking at. Especially if your council recall, before we ever got into the Ann McFarland, what the council requested was role clarity. And the more discussion came from that was Robert Rules of Order for the meeting. And I think that was productive. We spent, I don't know, $3,000, $4,000 for that. I think it was productive. But also what she was able to do is she gave us some for the council to look at, to change some of our rules and regulations for meetings. And unfortunately, we have not put that as a priority to have those meetings. Well, for me, it always is, if we spend the money as soon as possible, we have meetings for follow-up. If not, we just keep, as Chris has said, we kick the can down the road. I would certainly put that as a priority. Second one, Robert's rules ties into that. The other one was role clarity, is I mentioned, those two pumbed together. It's just a role clarity will take a separate individuals who give these talks all the time. We can certainly get one or two of these individuals who can do anywhere between 40 five minutes of meetings, and they're very, very effective. The benefit is what they focus on is that what is the rules and responsibility of an elected official, in this case, the council? Also spin off of that, what is the mayor and staff's responsibility after these rules, regulations, ordinances, resolutions have been done? And that's very critical that we have. So the AWC, the one thing they have a lot of is mayor retreats, things that are here, which Chris and I have attended, I've attended the last three years that they've had. The answer is good, but what comes up in the mayor's meetings a lot is that how do they work with council? So I would like to see more of AWC, my recommendations have been pretty effective, but you also need to have equal meetings for the elected officials, because they're not included in these meetings. And the responsibility of rules, regulations, ordinances, resolutions, responsibility is the mayor and staff to carry those out. So I think that's, that's one that will take probably a special, a separate meeting. Tie, so that's what I have there. Well, the other thing I want to throw out is this, if I may. Katie and I have had this discussion several times now, and I agree with her that it's very confusing how we have things in here that's been in here for a long period of time and not. But Katie and I were talking, and they just throwing ideas back and forth. I'd like to throw this out for council's consideration. Something up that if there was another date assigned, it goes on the list, second list down. And only the list that the number top, that way, when we look at, like, when we look at this now, there's no way of knowing which is going to be a priority, because we haven't assigned dates. I would recommend for us to consider for the council is move in a specific box, that's, that's a priority we're dealing with now. Something that is not a priority, we haven't put a date to, let's put that in a separate box. Katie has referred to this, what to focus on, not try to double guess what.
Agreed, Mike. With the added action items list, I think we're on a really good path to accomplish that, proceedings are more clear. Does anybody else have any other comments on those, those two items that will be going forward?
Yeah, I'd echo that. I believe that when Ms. McFarland had addressed the group, that there was some there was some aspects of the procedural definition for, and I just would like to ensure that that's revisited.
Agreed. Go ahead, Hugh.
Mayor Protem, a quick question on the new thinking of facilitated presentation or just a conversation amongst yourself? Or so outside, you know, conferences to attend?
It would be an outside, where we bring somebody in like we did Ann McFarland. With AWC, they do this all the time, and they've got it down to a science, they're very, really down-to-earth for us to be able to deal with, we move forward. I see Chris shaking her head, because she's very familiar with as many meetings I've been to, that they're, they're really effective here to the general meetings with AWC. One of the things they don't specify in a lot is what is the responsibility of the actual council member? Is on a role clarity, does that help?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, and of course, following that, you know, logically, the procedure, so maybe when we send this out, we'll get some comments from the group here, maybe we put those three items together. Rarity first, followed very closely by the review of the council rules of procedure, because I think if that's in, then we'll have the tools we need to have that further discussion.
So if we had numbered these, Mayor, that number three, four, and five, we'd kind of package those together with a facilitator? And have, okay.
Yeah, I think maybe the workshop on Robert's Rules of Order and role clarity, and then maybe we might need some time to step back and have, and then have the council take a look at the rules of procedure and how to take what we learned during that other, that other workshop and put it into place. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, just proposal is that role clarity would be totally separate. It would not be in conjunction with Robert's Rules of Procedure.
I think they all kind of go together, but maybe maybe we'll choose three, like, right in a row. We'll see what people weigh in on. But I think those two, those three things actually are really closely related. They all need to be addressed. And sorry, I'm squinting, but my screen's really small. Visit Spokane presentation, Katie.
So Visit Spokane was going to, was proposing to make some changes, ended up withdrawing their request, because they received funding from Spokane County Tarzak dollars. Meg Whitman has been very active since she's been and is going to share with you what they're tackling. I know I just got an email from Visit Spokane, I'm assuming most of you did as well. So this is just an opportunity for her to come and share with you, it's really just a presentation.
Yeah, yeah, I, to me, that sounds more like a 10 or 15 minute presentation during regular meeting, maybe. Because I'd like to see our, have our community also understand.
Correct, and because the hotel motel restaurant industries have really, really taken a hit, maybe we should wait a little bit and do it more towards summer.
And so that won't, that won't take up a whole workshop time, we'll just plan a presentation. Any comments from anybody on that one? Line scooters, council member Dunn.
You know, strike this one, we'll bring it back next year.
Okay. All right.
Then next one. If you're looking for timelines, I think since we've already taken up some of this work, and we've discussed it a couple of times, I know many people have said sooner rather than March, to keep picking it up and putting it down, as Katie's referenced before with other things. I think it makes sense to decide if we're going to move forward or if we're not, so we can and, and then with regard to the, the other topics that we've talked about, I did hear sooner rather than later. I think a couple of things I'd be interested in, is it in with the financial investment policy workshop? I think that one for me would be like in April or May, because I think we do have some financial library, with Trailhead with all of that, and then I think it leads into the budget cycle for us. So that would be my idea of timing on that one. Community sculpture presentation to maybe the, the holdup on that. So I think whatever timeline the, the commission has, we want to make sure that we're, we're not holding them up. And then I think the, the, I think for me, I would like to see those maybe in like, in, like, in April. Because I think we do need to make some changes. We did have that, I think, before we go invest in another workshop. I think we need to take action on the workshop we already invested in. So I would like to, I guess, follow through with a couple of those things, maybe those down.
Okay, so this is going a lot faster than I thought, go ahead, Katie.
I just have a quick comment about council doesn't want to move forward with making changes, that we do it as soon as possible, because there is an election in November, and I'm not, I I'm not, if you were to change this, this would affect the November election, the term of decision.
Yeah, that's a great point.
And we don't just have a check, thank you. Okay, and so tentatively for March, we have a joint workshop with Spokane Valley. February is going to be kind of, kind of packed with interviews and some other things going on. Still need to work out some, yes, come, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, I thought you were going to ask for the comments, that's quite all right.
Go ahead.
I want to jump back on that, because I think what we've done, I think we've had a really good discussion, but I believe we've had two or possibly even three discussions on that. And I really think council makes a decision, either we're going to make that decision and put in term limits, or we make the decision that we give it to the citizens. So I don't think that we need to, but I think we're to the point, we can make a decision on, is that something we control? Or is it, do we give it to the citizens? I think that should be it, and I think it ties into that election coming up in November. Thank you.
Sure, council member Kurt.
To that point, then, would the next step potentially be to put it on an agenda with it?
If I, if I might add, I, I've had a couple of very interesting conversations. I know districting, and in my mind, those two are kind of going together. And so to me, I think it would be advantageous if we could have somebody who's kind of defined for us, terminus versus districting, how they're different. There's a lot more, so I, I think it would be worth the council, you know, getting information on both. But where I was thinking, it would be both, it could be one or the other, confident enough to go into that detail. But I'm, Katie and I are sitting down together tomorrow, maybe we can put some thoughts behind it, because I'd like to make sure everybody has all the pertinent information.
Lots depends on the demographics of the community, and larger community. Spokane went to election by district for their council branch district. And they did that in early 2000. Anyway, I can do, we can do some research and bring something back, but there are two different things. Yes, they are, some communities call it wards, where you split the town into pieces, and then the candidates have to come, a representation of each district.
Everything, but I think it'd be worthwhile to make sure everything's kind of out on the table for consideration. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Katie, is that I think mistake, that they should not be considered collectively together, they need to be addressed individually. Thanks.
Get back to tentatively for March, joint workshop with Spokane Valley. I need to have some additional conversations with the mayor and she, I think she's vice mayor, with, with Ben Wick and Brandy Peet on that. The request really is, it's not, nothing with regards to policy or anything, but more to share and information going on, and anything regional that maybe we can work together better on in the future with regards to regional things that affect both of us. So we, right now, we are thinking March, not sure which March meeting. So I'd like to hear some feedback on that. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mary. This has been something that's been brought up over a period of time, and we're talking about trying to put things into March. And I think that we already have things that are such a priority for us. As I said, meeting with the valley, although might have some advantage to it, to me is not a priority. And to try to put that in March is not something I would support, member, you know, down the road is fine. But I really think if we're looking at March, we need to put priorities, things we've already spent a lot of time on, so we can break it.
Point taken, council member Dunn, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just that I support and prioritize the objective, and would commit to a special meeting date for the purpose. And ensuring that we are aware of, and I would say mutually recognizing our objectives, to me, has priority. So, thanks.
Thank you. Email with everybody, she's going to prioritize and give any individual feedback. Just remember when that goes out, don't reply all. And then we'll try to put a tentative schedule together to be discussed. And after that, we've got council retreat with regards to capital facilities. That came up at our last meeting, since we had to cancel our last retreat because of COVID. And we talked talked about, about single topic, though it's a big topic on the agenda for a retreat. We're thinking the earliest that it might happen with COVID at this point, because we don't know what the point of thought was, to put it, put it on an alternate Tuesday in April, knowing that we very well would need to move that. I think it's very important that we're actually all together in the brainstorm and be in the same place while we're all looking at it. So I'd like some feedback on that, if you'd like. And council member Kurt?
I fully support, this has been one of the things that we've really wanted to dive into. I support having that one topic be the focus of our energy for our time together. So yeah, I think I think able to stick time frame, given the COVID concerns, but as soon as we're able to physically be in person, I think this would be a great thing to take up. And then, you know, we're heading into some of the other topics with the financial investment together nicely.
Great, thank you. I thought I saw another hand.
Chris, I was going to.
Okay, hold on, let me get council receivers and then Dunn. About Hugh, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. I like the idea of doing this together. I'm struggling as I say that, because I, I hate, I think this is such a valuable topic, that I hate to continue to push it out. I almost rather us put a hard day, if we still can't be together, then let's do it in April. I think there's some whiteboarding. I, I fully agree with the value of being together and for brain technology we could use for virtual whiteboarding, things like that. But I would just hope that we don't kick it down the road any further than April, pretty top priority.
Well, so our alternate Tuesdays in April would be the 13th through the 27th. Did our, Mayor Protem?
My
I'm sorry, I apologize, Mayor Protem, hold on, I have the, I have council member Dunn first, I've missed him.
Thank you.
Um, that's good.
Thank you. That, council member Kennedy, sorry about that.
Well, that's quite all right. I really agree with Dan and everybody, if we could do this in person, that would be simply, there's no reason to keep postponing this. I would go for the month of March. I really would go for the month of March. We have capital facilities, we have life we've dealt with over the period of the last year or so. That kicking it down another month or so is not advantage to us. If we can't get together personally, then we'll do it, sooner we can get to this, and better off we are. If we have a retreat in March, whatever can come out of that can spill over into April, if we decide we need to have another one. Dance, we're certainly looking at May, and then June, and next thing you know, we're into budget. And once again, I guess I get a little disappointed when I keep some Liberty Lake, and life goes on, okay? So if we're going to have to do this through Zoom, let's continue forward with that. I would throw out maybe by the second meeting in March. Thanks.
Thank you, council member Foyer, and then council member Kurt.
Thank you, Bear. I noticed in your weekly rep, he extended an offer to take a field trip to his facility. I for one, before we talk about capital facilities, would like to do that with all of our buildings. So my question is, group efforts probably hard to coordinate. Is this, is this something that we can coordinate one-on-one amongst ourselves? When it's
Okay, well, Katie said give her a phone call, she'll help schedule it. I know Chief Simmons is up for whatever works for each, each member. I've had a specific conversation with him. So some of those, yeah, especially being newer members, it'd be a great idea still to give you, I, I need to, even myself, have known the county hall that I really didn't know much about, so really good idea to get into some of our other facilities as well.
And just to clarify, I'm, I'm looking for City Hall, the shot is today, Trailhead, the library, you name it.
Yep.
I'll bring my white glove, so watch out. Thank you.
And your mask.
So that I would love to, and, and, as Kinsy brought it up, go on all of those tours. I mean, if there's small COVID appropriate groups, so that we're not taking up everybody's time, I would love to be, that wasn't why I raised my hand. What were we talking about? We were talking about capital facility, oh, the, the council retreat. Be with Hugh and Mike, that a hard date, we, we need to, we need to do this. So what other meet, whatever medium it is, and then I just wanted to suggest best that varied functionality, um, for whiteboarding and commenting and all sorts of different kinds of interactive pieces to it. So that might be a different platform we might use for that process.
Yeah, you kind of read my mind. We use Webex more at, at my office, though we sell teams and things like that. But Webex definitely has a lot more tools, so I'll get what Todd on that. We can talk about some options. Katie?
Mayor and council, I did just get an email from RJ giving me an update on phase two. And I do know we have met two of the four metrics. And today's meeting, we learned that we might be moving to phase two in the near future. And in the email that the governor's office sent out says whole in-person public meeting in addition, in addition to virtual options. However, the capacity of these meetings is limited to 25% of the posted occupancy of people, which is ever fewer. Cities in phase two must also provide public virtual access meetings at a minimum via telephone. So that's great news. Yep, it would be the occupancy of our city council chambers is in the 80 to 90, um, range of 25% of that is probably 15 or 20.
Great, with virtual. That'd be great, great news. Thanks RJ, wherever you are. All right, uh, Mayor Proton?
Abs absolute time to move to Idaho to have this meeting?
Certainly been eating there a lot.
Yeah, we could have, we could have dinner.
And, um, so we talked about the retreat and then, um, 2021 events workshop. I think you're going to touch on that actually in your, in your report later.
Yeah, there's a whole work, Jen is going to share with you some of the conversations that we've talked about of what it gets looked like in 2021.
Okay. All right, so I don't want, that anybody wants to add some additional comments to since, um, it's just, uh, 6:31, we've got a little bit more time or we can adjourn until seven o'clock? Anybody have
Thank you. I'm assuming this is a good time for some follow-up questions from previous meetings? Just for some updates, is that okay?
Or
If you, if you want, if you want to wait until later, that's fine. Just tell me, I can handle it. So I was just looking for an update on, just looking for an update eight, uh, approve them moving forward?
Okay, I heard Steven and Ben.
I'll, I'll ask all my questions. And then you can, um, then maybe an update on where we're at with the generator improvement over at the police station? And then finally, uh, just to follow up to the land purchase happen? And if so, where did the monies go? Thank you.
Go ahead, Katie, hold on your second.
I'll start easy and then, um, work up. Mayor Proton?
Really would, yeah, I think it'd be great if we could get those, those questions answered. But I also want to point out that we, we do, we have certain individuals who don't attend the six o'clock meeting, but citizens do attend our seven up here. I think this should be asked again in a seven o'clock meeting.
Well, that's fine. I, I'll, I'll ask them at the seven o'clock, just tell me when.
I just, I, I'm only
Well, that way, so wait, go ahead.
Tend to have more people attending the seven o'clock meeting. You want to do it twice? I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable with that as long as we do it again at the seven o'clock.
Well, why don't we, and we will come back during the city report section and get those answers for you. Does that work?
Good, perfect, thank you.
Great, all right, if nobody else has it early until seven o'clock?
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Looking over I think time here. Okay, close enough. Um, hopefully I've got everything turned back on properly. If I don't, uh, somebody waves me down. So welcome to our February 2nd, 2021 council meeting consistent with Governor Enbry's order 20-8, 28.15, dated January 19th, 2021. All public meetings continue to be held remotely. We are following the directions of that order and this meeting is being held remotely. I'd like to go over a few of the logistics so that we can have a productive meeting. On this agenda are routine and necessary actions for our council to consider. We will provide two opportunities staff physically attending this meeting in the council chambers with me this evening, our city administrator Katie Allen and IT technician Todd Henderson. Todd will be the manager of this evening's Zoom meeting. I would like to take roll call of the city council and remind you all that we will be doing roll call voting for the remainder of the meeting, which I don't think we've, that we've been doing. Yeah. At this time, I will call your name. Please let me know if you're participating.
Present.
Kennedy? Councilmember Foyer?
Yes, present.
Councilmember Severs? Didn't hear you.
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunn?
Hey, good evening.
Councilmember Kurt? And Councilmember Langford?
Present.
Okay, for some reason, Councilmember Langford, I can't see you. Let me see if I can find.
You can't see me yet, I'm working on it.
Okay, well, if you, if you want, if you need to get my attention, if you want to make a comment, just city staff also attending remotely are city clerk Anne Swenson, police chief David Simmons, crew lead Trevor Reagan, planning engineering at building service services director Rattle, street fleet Stephen Williams, city attorney Sean Vouts, finance director RJ Stevenson, operations and maintenance director Jen Camp, engineer Ben Schmidt, interim municipal library director Jan, Jan D. Humble, and HR manager Heidi Orkman. As I mentioned earlier, there will be two opportunities for public comment with this application. There's a three-minute limit during a regular citizen comment period. For the record, please let me know your name and if you are a city of Liberty Lake resident or not. Participate by choosing a chat feature on Zoom. All chat comments will go to Todd Henderson and who will then notify me if there is public comment. Finally, anyone who is not speaking will be muted if on the agenda is the indication. Councilmember Severs?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Lord God, uh, thank you for many the many, uh, as we're working to do our best to serve the citizens of Liberty Lake tonight, please ask that you guide us and be behind us. And as you're looking out through these times of, we still have a lot of, uh, hope to be thankful for. We hope you continue to, to serve the greater region and, uh, and guide all the, all the healing that needs to take place around.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay, call this meeting to order. Mayor Proton Kennedy?
Present.
Councilmember Foyer?
Here.
Councilmember Receiver? Councilmember Dunn?
Good evening.
Councilmember Kurt?
Present.
And Councilmember Langford? Agenda approval, Mayor Proton, I believe we may have some adjustments?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, we have two of the council's consideration to be added. One would be their items held. And second would be, I know that it did come in your package and we do have a executive session tonight and it is scheduled and we will have an executive set before I make a motion to the agenda be approved as presented.
Second agenda is amended.
Move in second it, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um, I believe we have, uh, citizen comment to be written to the record. So, Anne?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Um, prior to reading the citizen comment into the record, I believe Holly Woodruff also wanted to make a citizen comment this evening.
Sure, yeah, and if you, if you're in the audience and not, um, speaking, if you could please mute yourself, we're getting some interference.
Hello?
Okay, so we will see if there's any, hello?
This is Holly Woodruff, I'm not getting any audio.
We can hear you, Holly. Do we have any citizen comments?
Hello?
Some questions? Yes?
Hi, this is, this is Holly.
We can hear you, Holly.
Okay, uh, thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, I haven't been able to get audio since you closed the, um, original, uh, workshop at six o'clock, so sorry if I butted in.
That's okay, we're ready for citizen comments and that's where, what you're looking for.
Yes, thank you. Um, thank you, Mrs. Mayor and city council and staff and all the guests. My name is Holly Woodruff. I am a citizen of Liberty Lake and a registered voter. And I'm also president of the Friends of the Liberty Lake, in that role that I'd like to speak briefly, uh, during the citizen comments. First, um, hard to believe it's been a year, but now it's been a year since our last fundraiser and the Be My Valentine basket going on right now. And it's virtual online. You can find the links on our state municipal library and also on our webpage, which is libertylakefriends.org. So that's the first thing I'd like to I, we've got bid, we're very excited. This has gone really, really well. So thank you to all our donors and to everybody who's bidding. The auction will close at 9:00 PM on February as I know the council is going to have a workshop discussion on proposed library capital needs funding, uh, later in this meeting. And I would just like to say, obviously could throw the libraries way. Uh, I think the library is an amazing asset to our community. Um, it's one of the best libraries for a city this size that we can imagine will do expand in the future and, uh, and offer even more than we do now. We have an amazing staff. We have an amazing facility for its size and for the city. For the size of our, whatever you can find in the budget, um, will be very much appreciated. And last, um, on behalf of the Friends, we would really like to thank these last two plus years. Personally, uh, she's been a great, uh, partner with me since I have been president of the Friends. I'm now going into my third year resident. Uh, we think that she has really brought a lot of innovations to the library. I know she's helped me immensely. Uh, we've had a great partnership. And I just wanted to commend her for all her great work. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Do we have any other requests for citizens coming for, one of you? Okay, so, um, Tim Olson.
Good evening, thank you very much. So in reference to the capital's needs coming up for the library, I just want to mention that the city of Liberty Lake and the municipal library did a community and facility assessment with a national library consultant Kimberly Boland in 1929, page four of the final report, which is on the city of Liberty Lake's website. You'll see that the support for the library is very high with those who attended discussion sessions and that a vast majority of attendees supported it, which is to keep up with the growing demands of the community. It's really refreshing to know that the library with Jocelyn's guidance and her staff is a vital part of this community. But according to the top identified needs for the community discussion group, youth programming and space, more teen programming, quiet space within the library, more power access, more adult type programs are all things that this community is asking for that we need to provide to them. We have about 11,000 citizens in Liberty Lake right now, 10 to 15 years. There's different discussions on space, the library is about 9,600 square feet. And there's different thoughts on per capita size for libraries, but that's Miss King's library over time. This one tells part of the story, though. Using a populations and nearly 50 data points for each library, they concluded that they had some key takeaway, the library is well below its fears and, excuse me, below its peers in funding, visits well, well below in comparison, but circulations and program made to, pro above average. So our outstanding library has been more with less, lower funding and limited space. Our library is more than just a place to check out a book. As you read this report, you listen to interact with the citizens of Liberty Lake. The need for more is evident. I would just like to thank Jocelyn very much. She's been a hu huge asset to work to the best of luck. The need to grow our library, the decision to allocate funds to address the capital needs for our library needs to be handled starting now.
Thank you. All right, and I think we have Pat Dockery?
Yes, uh, Madam Mayor, thank you very much. As my oh, okay, thank you. Um, I wanted to let everyone know that the Kiwanis Club has canceled the father-daughter dance again this year. We had tried in the spring and it's obviously, as you all know, it just takes a lot of time to plan something like this. So we figured better to cancel it again this year and reschedule for next year. Vision on the yard sale, which would normally be at the end of June. We'll discuss that at our meeting tomorrow and, and I'll come back to the city council side to do. I was contacted by Jennifer Camp about that. And also, um, we have, uh, signed on for the, the events of Labor Day. Thank you.
Thank you, good to see you again. For in-person comments before we move to our letter? Okay, Anne?
Good, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. Um, I received an email yesterday afternoon from Thomas family who lives in McCann. I'm unable to attend tomorrow's city council meeting. I would like this letter to be added to public comment. Thank you in advance. I was shocked by 21. Mayor Brickner had submitted a letter of resignation December 30th, 2020, and by reading the article in the splash where he had attributed his resignation to health and family reasons. Indecent circulating, Mayor Brickner had been looking for a new place to live in the fall. Wow, now I'm really concerned as buying or changing one's residence is in the top five stress and do some thoughtless to contact the city and get a true understanding of what might be going on there. In contacting the city, they were unaware of any changes in the mayor's living arrangements and still had him living at a sudden just didn't seem to me to be right, especially with his family and health issues. I took it upon myself to do a little research in this matter. What I think Brickner resigned as mayor, he no longer lived in the city and was no longer eligible to hold office as mayor. I think it's important for the public and Liberty Lake City Council to have the information records, RCW and at MRSC, please consider the following facts. On September 7, 2020, Mayor Brickner listed his house for sale at Liberty Lake, Washington. On September 11, 2020, he accepted an offer to sell the Marty Court home with a contingency before closing, he would find an equal or better residence. Later date in September or early October, Mayor Brickner entered into a purchase agreement for a home at 4810 South Quinamos Road, Liberty Lake, Washington. This property is well outside city limits. On October 23, 2020, a new member to our community, Mr. Kyle, signed his closing page 24318, East Marty Court, Liberty Lake, Washington. Mayor Shane Brickner signed and completed the sale agreement on October 30, 2020, and on his first with Wayne Lamerol for the purchase of 4810 South Quinamos Road in Liberty Lake, his new residence. On both documents, Mayor Shane Brickner claims his to 4810 South Quinamos Road, Liberty Lake, Washington address. Mayor Brickner signed both purchase and sale documents under penalty of perjury, which is a class theft or a $5,000 fine for both. Mayor Brickner's sale and moving from his home triggered the action outlined in RCW 35 8, 35A12 dot 6, 35A dot 12 dot 060 states that "The office of a mayor or council member shall become vacant if the provision fails to qualify, as provided by law, fails to enter upon the duties of that office at the time fixed by law without a justifiable reason, or as provided 12 dot 060, or 42 dot 12 dot 010. A vacancy in the office of mayor or in the council shall be filled out as provided in RCW. An incumbent council member is eligible to be appointed to fill a vacancy in the office of mayor. When the question of moving and residence, as it got 12 dot 060, was brought to MRSC, the response to moving and being a resident is a very fact-specific issue, so yes, in a good or feel perfect purpose district that they serve, if the move is temporary and the individual intends to move back into the jurisdiction and reestablish permanent residents, there is a fact-specific issue. Mayor Brickner did not qualify as a resident according to the MRSC because he showed his address on two public documents to be out. He and his investment of almost $1 million in a new home outside the city showed he had no intention to return. Again, Mayor, 30th, 2020 showed he clearly created a vacancy in office of mayor for the city of Liberty Lake. That vacation of the mayor's office took place well before his letter were written on these, why is this timeline relevant? The true date of vacancy in office created by Mayor Brickner's action, October 30, 2020, could have evolutions impacting our city. By law, vacating the office of mayor does not allow one to act as mayor nor carry out one's duties as mayor. They are prohibit city which they no longer legally represent. Therefore, the following ordinances and resolutions are set aside for not having a valid mayor's signature and their subject to council could consider them valid due to the fact 10 days passed with no action that can be taken from the mayor due to vacancy of office. Or sentences, number 273, development code, number 279, salary and budget, number 271, condemnation of property, number 270, setting city property, number 20 dash 283, Fourth Edition River District, Tretina, number 20 dash 282, contracting emergency, contracting for emergency service now, police chief Simmons and the council confirmation to fill that role at the December 15, 2020 meeting, it was not Mayor Brickner's election and appointment to make. Election should have, Chief Simmons were sorry and embarrassed that you had to begin your service for our city under this cloud of obfuscation by Mayor Brickner. What is most disheartening by Mayor Shane Brickner's action with his new address, nor notify the city clerk, she was living outside the city boundary and thereby not eligible to retain his office. Mayor Brickner continued to collect pay and title, and his attendance is doomed at his Quinamos Road location was truly a slap in the public's face. Another concern for the public would be if the city employee aware of this move. If they were aware and did not bring that to the attention of the city clerk, city attorney, or other members of the council, they should be ashamed of their actions and held you preach transparency, you acted as truly a non-transparent individual. Mayor Brickner, we realize that your health and family are important to you, but you using that excuse for cover-up and sham. I ask the council, the city attorney, and the public to contemplate these actions and take steps to ensure this type of behavior never occurs. Up the road of procedure and qualifying those changes to prevent these nefarious situations by a person like Brickner is a necessity. The council should demand return of any money December of 2020. That approximate $4,500 could be well used by the Parks and Art Commission to establish more public art in our city. Action in one year of which I am aware of that currently being played upon our community now by former Mayor Brickner. The first was at the beginning of the year of the City of Liberty Lake logo, letter dated March 17, 2020, city attorney to James Alexander. It involved James Alexander's promotion of Mayor Brickner members of the council who were up for election or reelection. At a $14,500 boondoggle of city funds, I found out using a public records request. I call on the entire council and city attorney to openly explain both of these events at an open public meeting and not within a closed-door executive session. And then he cites enclosures of a real estate excise tax agreement for 24318, East Marty Court, Liberty Lake, Washington, 99019, and a real estate excise agreement for 4810 South Quinamos Road, Liberty Lake, Washington, 99019. And he cites evidence that can be acquired with questioning, 972020, listing agreement to sell Marty Court at 495M, Agent Ashley London, Four Degrees Real Estate, 9112020, selling agent Jay Adair, Haven Realty, representing buyers from Marty Court, purchase price 507 million, or excuse me, 507M, purchase of Quinamos property, 989,923, 2020 through 1030, 2020. The end of his public comment.
Okay. Thanks, Anne, for reading the statement, but this had already been brought to the city's attention, and it is being looked into. Do we have any other public comments, Todd? Okay, all right, so we're done with citizen comments, proclamations, and special presentations, are we going to Jocelyn first or Betty?
Yeah, so Sandy Bishop is going to have a few words.
Great, thanks, Sandy.
Address to Madam Mayor of the City Council and the citizens of Liberty Lake, and specifically towards Jocelyn. Municipal library trustees, we want to say thank you for what you've done for the library during your tenure as the library director, Jocelyn. It's been an honor to the success of the library, the staff, and the development of the Community Library Assessment Plan. Especially, it's a job not just well-done, but exceptionally done. We're saddened by your departure, yet we wish you much success in your new job, Jocelyn.
Thank you, Sandy.
Jocelyn, I'll just jump in to say, and I know we've talked already, but an absolute joy to have here, you've done an amazing job, and we are very, very sad to lose you. Sandy, going to be stepping in in the intro, carry on, we will definitely miss you.
Thank you, I appreciate the kind words.
So, oh, I apologize, Councilmember Dunn first and Councilmember Seavers.
Hey, I just also really wanted to express my personal thanks to Jocelyn on her passion and her patience, and her ability to steadfastly, in the face of potential great adversity group, has been a joy to observe, and so without saying, it'll be just so hard to see you go, but please, best regards and keep in touch.
Thank you.
Jocelyn, you just brought a breath of fresh air to the library, and the word I'm going to use is fun, you showed up and there are big shoes to fill with what Pamela laid before you, but my gosh, you've just done an excellent job, and you're going to be severely missed after, so thank you for everything you've done for the city and for the library.
Thank you.
Mayor Forte, Tim Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor. John, I can think about it, you are a rock star. You know, when you came on board, you know, I'd been around a lot with Pamela, so in the, almost the start of the library, when we were doing the assessment, I attended every one of those meetings, and I'll be honest with you, when you came on board, I was very hopeful that you were going to be able to jump in the middle of this, and who becomes new, a lot of times a little reluctant, because let's face it, in this city, no different than other cities, we have strong personalities, elected officials, also staff, but I got to tell you, you are a rock star role, I mean, you really did, and I can remember after about the third meeting, I walked away, and I can remember saying to Betty, I said, Liberty Lake Library is in good hands. With what Pamela's been able to do is outstanding, I think you've done great training with the people who are there, and I'm going to tell you, it's going to be difficult to find somebody to fill those shoes, and wish you all the luck in the future, you know, thank you, I from the deepest part of my heart, I really appreciate you as an individual, thanks.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, well, Sandy, I think we all share the same sentiments, so I think next up, we have a very exciting, at least to me, presentation by management or silverware project.
Thank you very much, everybody, for taking a look at the biggest projects of my career, so can y'all see the presentation okay?
No.
Okay, sorry, Todd, may I share?
There we go.
Yep.
All right, so this is big overpass project that we've been working on the past six months since I've been here, and was actually started at the very beginning of 2020, and this is basically the bridge that's going Country Vista Drive all the way across the interstate to Mission, and it's almost right in between Harvard Parkway and the kind of overpass exit on the west, sorry?
Appleways?
Appleways over to the over, it's a little bit off my screen, but basically, it's a 14 and a half million dollar overpass project, and it provides a lot of accessibility for emergency, for folks to get back and forth across the city for the new high school that's going in. We've invested about $3.1 million to date so far. And our local, the bridge widening and then the Barker project was 6 million. So, right now, we are in the very final stages of design, it's complete, all the right-of ways acquired late March 2021, and then construction can begin in the spring of 2021, which is really exciting. So I just wanted to take some times, because when you're looking through 180 plan sheets, it's kind of difficult to tell what it's going to look like, so I thought I'd tell the story and some pictures. So basically, we're at Country Vista, the intersection of Country Vista and the new Kramer Road, and what the road is currently doing right now, this is, this is Henry slash is, it's basically cutting this corner here and then connecting with Country Vista, but what we're going to do is realign that roadway to a stop intersect up the interstate back to a new roundabout by the River Crossing 2020, new subdivision that's going to be going in. So, kind of running through some of the signalized intersection design, we decided over a roundabout, just to maintain that long-term level of service A, which means that traffic can flow, waiting a long time, and that was just a little bit better than the roundabouts, which wouldn't, would have been a service level B, and I personally am a huge fan of roundabout outs, but I wanted to make sure we had pedestrian-friendly facilities, and there was ease of access across there, and with such a busy corridor on Country Vista, it made the most sense to do a signalized intersection so that, really well. Another kind of fundamental design decision we had was when we're lighting up the roadway, there are a couple of options that have this presents to us a more expensive monthly cost that's paid for the life of the entire streetlight, or we can pay more money upfront, approximately $33,000 for the rest of the life of the light, and we decided to go with this discounted rate and pay upfront, because there's about a 10-year, bring the life of infrastructure, that's pretty short, and so that will be cost savings to the citizens later on in the future. And another thing that you can't, because there is a stormwater plume under this area from the old county landfill, and in the 60% design, we found that we had to design all our stormwater, so this is kind of a complex design, and you're collecting all the stormwater from all these impervious areas, and you're trying to pipe it to someplace outside where you still have right-of-way and not get it to be, oh, what will happen is there'll be a stormwater pond on the west side of the bridge that you'll see in that county right-of-way there, and that was a coordination effort between the county to maintain the light rail corridor that's going to be in there, but also have a ponds that would fit in that space. And another interesting thing that we did here, we used a low impact design, which basically allows a much smaller pond with a little different treatment material in there, and saved us a lot of right-of-way costs as well as some other it's kind of exciting to integrate some of the Eastern Washington Low Impact Development Designs into our project to help save space. The really good side view looking west towards Spokane, and what you can see here And what you can see here is we've got a couple of really unique designs that are a little bit different. And then so normally, when you're looking at a lot of the bridges in the region, there is either a wall design or a sloped embankment design. And this has slopes that go down on either side and it takes up quite a bit of right away. So there's additional cost there. And then the wall designs are typically more expensive and called a moment slab in them, which basically allows all the weights to of the the traffic on the roadway to to help keep the wall all from it's an expensive thing that you can't really see inside the bridge design. But what we ended up going with is actually a hybrid design where we have this great stamped cobble look and the kind of a water line with a there'll be a little green stripe on top, we can change that during construct. Clearly, it's a this really pretty well designed. And then there's going to be what's called a gabion mesh on the slope so that it's easy for our crews to maintain. And what that gabion looks like is it's cobbles and rocks that are in a mesh. And so they don't slide down off the wall and you're not constantly dealing with trying to maintain them there, but it'll have this really kind of nice look to roadway. And by doing this design this way, even though it seems more complex there, we saved the project close to 1.5 million dollars, which was a huge savings. In order. And then also the other benefit here is we have protected the light rail corridor by doing this additional bridge span over on the south end and and we're being at 1.5 million dollars for that as well. So there's a lot of agency partnership and coordination between Department of Transportation and the county and the light that we're planning for the future with this design. Another thing I really liked in this was if you've been over to the Greens Ferry Bridge or traveled that going to Spals, there's these protective pedestrian fencing that goes on the top. And I think with that black design, it it looks really good. And helps there. And then the nice thing for the bridge and for pedestrian accessibility, we have a lot of multimodal transportation built into the design. So six and a half foot sidewalk, a really big six and a half foot bike lane, great travel lanes so that our crews can maintain the infrastructure, another six and a half foot bike lane and then a block that will be connected to paths within the new Greenstone developments going in. So a lot of great opportunities for people to go back and forth across the bridge safely and be protected. So this is looking south from the new roundabout. And what there's a there's a lot of utilities in this corridor. It's when you drive past it looks like open field. When I first started, I said, oh, this is going to be a super easy project because a great open field there. But there's actually Liberty Lake Water and Sewer District lines, big things underneath that able to provide water to our citizens and sewer. And there's also an opportunity for a Vista to link their distribution network across the highway to and you only get a couple in great coordination with our utility partners. Sorry, Councilmember Seavers, did you have a question?
I did not mean to interrupt. You sorry about if you don't mind a question now versus at the end of this slide. Is that a golf cart I see on the on the rendering?
Excellent. I
be able to drive golf cart.
Pathways designed for that.
That's awesome. Sorry, I did not mean to interrupt you. Sorry.
No, you're good. It's a yeah, it's a good catch. There and rendering. So basically, the big benefit with coordinating with our utility partners is we can bid the whole project at the same time and get disagreements that need to happen. But everybody's been been really stepping up to help out with this project. And I think the nice thing is is we'll be able to get all this critical infrastructure done at the same time. And so we don't have to go back and try to do work in the same corridor again, if they ever want to expand it. So that that's been a great partnership there. Other interesting things that we did too are this hybrid gray design. So there's kind of a trade off between having the slow oak coming off the brain cars can slide down there for ice. But if it's too flat, then it limits access to those developers in those parcels to be able to get access off the roadway. So we sent maximum, which is a really good mix in between, but it it helps think ahead for the development in the region to allow more access there and keeps it safe. For to speak to the golf cart functional pedestrian back, sorry, bike pathways. We've got a lot of ways from the the roundabout and into the subdivisions and back and forth to the school. So I think this is a really big win for the city as far as interconnectivity. There's a lot of really safe place places for people to travel and as well as meet the traffic needs. Another thing that I thought was was kind of a relevant topic when thinking about the Harvest Park way damaged to the love the brick look masonry is really difficult to get bid. If you guys want to be millionaires, you should start a masonry company because it is a it's and can be really expensive to repair when it's damaged. So we've looked at quotes from anywhere between, you know, forty five to fifty thousand dollars per repair. To do was actually go with a stamped concrete wall. And the benefit of this is one, it saves about 121,000 dollars in the overall project cost. Two, we can ball and potentially do some of this work ourselves. And it will look like a stamped brick as you're driving quickly around it. If you're close up, you can see that it's it just an imprint. It makes it a whole lot easier to repair when you can just cut out the section of the wall, repor, pour the put the forms in, match the color and then be on your way. And I think design for for the future. The the other benefit is this roundabout is really well designed. If you can see, there's kind of what's called chicanes in it, or it's slows track straight away. There's this jog in here that you have to do. So hopefully that will help prevent any accidents there. But if for some reason there was an accident, at least we'd be able to repair it. And so those were a lot of the big items that we discussed and it's it's been a fun project. And we're really, if you have any questions, feel feel free to reach out.
Councilmember Kirk.
I just wanted to say thank you for the renderings and for the explanation. Nation. We've talked about it, what it's going to look like. But I I know we talked about the bridge, we talked about funding it. But I love the integration of the pedestrian access us the bike lanes, the cost savings that you were able to achieve by working with other other community partners. So thank you. Thank you.
I've got Councilmember Fairford and Ken.
This is this is great. I love to see the drawings, what we've got here. You know, this has been, this has been a dream of many of us in Liberty Lake for many, many years. We, you know, not only elected officials we have right now, which if you think back on this, we've got a lot of elected officials and three mayors, four mayors in the past, they've been working to where we are right now. So the great thing is is that where we are today is not just what's happened over the last one or two years. This has been a long process. Spending a lot of time and effort and money and a limit to try to get funding. I think it's outstanding. I got a couple of questions. One is that the could you go back to show the bridge itself over the freeway?
Yes.
I understand on the far left, the idea of the rail there, that was something that the county was important on. My assumption is that there's plenty of room for the two lanes now. If in the future, we ever get three lanes, there's plenty of room for that third lane, I assume. The state line.
There. So sorry, the three lanes on the on the interstate there is what you're looking at?
Well, yeah, right. You know, right now, all the congestion happens heading to Idaho. It comes a future. Hopefully, the state's going to come up where they're going to expand, put additional lanes there. So my assumption is this bridge is being built in mine where we will be able to put additional lanes there.
There's some setbacks potentially allow for that future design if we wanted to add lanes in there that are kind of being taken up by shoulders right now. It wasn't put in the plans. It wasn't like grayed out as a feature in the plans, but there would be the potential to be able to do that in the future without having to move the abutment, as I understand it.
Well, well, just a iteration, God forbid that we spent all this time, effort, money, and then when the state wants to add on third lane, we didn't take in consideration to white enough. So I'm sure that's been one when you mentioned about the pond, which is on the south side there. Is that something where we're going to have some sort of a concern with standing water that we might have to put fencing around that?
No. So the the way that pond works is there's no pedestrian access to that pond. You'd have to walk along the edge of the wall. There there'd be no way to get to it unless you were you were walking hang on not us there. It's actually, if you look at that shadow on the southern portion of the bridge, it'll be just to the west of that. And the way it's set up for design is it will have to treat and it will it will drain down and the pond will be dry after that certain period, but it's it's not meant to to retain the water for a long period of time where we're already about stalled in there as well. It's just using a little bit different soil method.
Okay. Thanks, man. My last question is is something I'm really interested for that bridge. That's public art discussion in the past with the idea of looking into some sort of public art, so funding for something like that. You know, when I look at that bridge, I'm looking at the the stamped con concrete on the right hand side, consideration for doing something there or over on the top. I think this is a golden opportunity for the city to be able to put our stamp on that bridge. As everybody realized that whatever art we could have there is a reflection of the city that obligated herself financially to build this bridge. But I hope that that's something that's a
Yeah, and that's an excellent observation. In this rendering, you can't see what the art will look like, but actually the the Planning and Arts Commission approves some integrated into 100% plans. But basically, it looks like trees that are going to be stamped into the concrete. And then there's a place for a medallion in which is a rounds logo something right above those trees there.
Right. I understood that. Yeah, there was some work going on that. But obviously, it's it's much further advanced than I, as a council member, was aware. So I'm quick to get those rendering to council so we can get some idea. I don't want to get so far down the road that suddenly something is presented to us and we've had no input or even working with
Happy to send you that sheet, that plan sheet that shows what that looks like.
This is this is exciting. This is great. I love to see this come to fruition. Thank you.
Councilmember Fuller.
Thanks, Ben, for all your hard work. These are great renditions. One question I have on the roundabout. You discuss or you talk about stamp concrete and play brick. I get that. I guess my question is, do you feel or does is there a strong need or in you know, island on the roundabout is one question, I guess.
Yes, so we do. You can't tell from the rendering right now, but that the L to be elevated in some capacity to allow stormwater to to drain from the center point all the way out to the corners to the outside there. And the lens is it's a pretty typical design for all the roundabouts in there and it it provides safety for cars crossing will jump the curb and jump into the lane on the other side. It it just helps direct traffic around there and provide that safety buffer. The other thing that's a little bit kind of unique about the true circle, it's actually kind of an oval shape. And the reason is because it allows for heavy trucks to turn and drive up on top of that red part. That's actually a truck about and not clip that island.
So my second question is, when you talk about the stamped concrete and if it gets damaged, how easily are you are you talking about doing a formed in place continuous pore? Are you talking about something like an ecology block with a decorative face?
Formed in place can expand and joints.
So damage. So if it gets damaged, you suggested that we have the sources to repair that ourselves in house.
We get the the form inserts and then the color samples to match in there so that we always know that we have that accessible. And in talking with the the street, something that they would be able to do.
Okay. And then a couple of other questions, if I can totally agree with you on the masonry cost. That's incredible right now. But who do we have all our savings?
That was actually kind of a conversation between everybody for for Lochner. They they brought up some really good night. That's a discussion about how we were going to move forward with that and what ways we could change that design. But Lochner did a really good job with coming up with Scott expensive and talking through with us. And I mean, I feel like I talked to them probably eight or nine times a day about this project. So.
All right. Well, you might be a little modest on whose idea, and that's awesome.
Really good. That's really good.
Okay. All right. So we've got I've got next councilmember Dunn, then councilmember Seaver and then back to you. So councilmember Dunn.
Thanks. Um, I guess I'll also say like the renderings here tells delivery here is exceptional in terms of giving people an understanding of the project way better than narratives. Could you flip to the prior slide, please? So and at the south abutments, and I'm just curious, you know, there's no impact abatement barrier as there is in what's depicted as the median between the two traffic lanes. And I'm just wondering about adding a barrier or, you know, an abatement barrier to that southern pillar set.
I so just to give you a little perspective, there's a lot of stuff in the renderings that included. But yes, all the safety measures around in the clear zone, calculations and everything. I think when they're trying to do the rendering, they're trying to make sure that they don't get too caught up in every single detail. It's going to be abatement barriers.
Cool. I just recognize that as a cost component and make sure that is accounted for in a project. Um, I'm just totally curious. There's this little to this image. What is that? I've always wondered.
So that's a Liberty Lake Water and Sewer District pump station.
Ah, okay. I knew that the building kind of can sealed by the monument had it. I didn't know. Um, roll to the prior slide, please. So in this image, it does an excellent job of depicting the realignment of this intersection. I guess property from what used to be the center of Henry Rhodes intersection. Does that property remain, you know, public property or is that southeastern corner?
I believe that is retained.
Okay.
As part of the plans there. So it will just be brought back to to I know you all I see.
We'll see. Because I mean, I'll just be very direct. This creates opportunity, in my opinion, when we talk about, you know, features of our city. So it's just good to know that just checking in on is that the adjacent property owner recognizes in this change, the need to adjust. it's just good to know that just checking in on is that the adjacent property owner recognizes in this change, the need to adjust, you know, driveways and curbs and all the rest of that stuff. And they're ready to do what they need to support that change.
Uh, yes, I mean, as part of the projects, as part of the project outreach, so Wash Dot will actually be overseeing the construction. And part of this thing for the city to do to reach out to all the property owners that are going to be affected way ahead of time. Once we get the bids back and get a contractor selected to talked about the specific details and meet them up side. But yes, it'd be part of the project expense.
Great. Um, now craziest question, but I recognize what's depicted in this uh, Kramer Parkway. Would you call the road that proceeds then through the north of this intersection Kramer Parkway?
That will be Kramer Parkway, yes.
Cool. So oh, I mean, I is it reasonable to now refer to this as the Kramer Parkway Bridge?
It is. Yes, uh, that that's a good, that's a good point. Um, I'm just trying to make sure I'm not confusing anybody when they supposed to link through. So I kind of refer to it as as both projects, but yes, it's it will technically all be Kramer Parkway when it's complete.
I mean, I I just, yeah, I want to try and begin that process this of perhaps that when we talk about, you know, this huge and really important infrastructure project in the city, uh, we can solidly refer to it as the Kramer Parkway Bridge. So, all right, thanks.
Councilmember Seaver is next.
I'm gonna have one kind of nitpicky question for you, Ben, but let me just let me start on uh, super. When you started showing these renderings, I almost want to jump out of my chair and start clapping. This is, I mean, uh, the work that you put in just shows, and I I love the collaboration effort that you mentioned, and wonderful project for the city. Uh, my my nitpicky question for you and is is about the roundabout, and you don't have to go back to it, but um, I love to agree with what you're saying about masonry. My concern with moving to a colored stamped concrete and and um, and I'm kind of going back to ten to fifteen years ago, maybe technology has changed, but my recollection is that saw cutting and re-coloring new concrete next to old concrete can be very difficult to match the color. Is that not the case anymore? Or is that a concern of yours? I more or less just bring it up so that we know that, hey, it's a million and a half dollars. I I think that we're willing to um, willing to risk it, but the other I'm about hit twice now, and we're trying to say three years from now fix it again, and four years ago from now fix it again, and five years from now fix it again. I'm worried about uh, the color of the concrete starting to look like a hodgepodge. Frankly, for a million five, we could probably repour the entire round entire wall a couple of times. It's pretty easy to to match um, concrete color over time. It it are there improvements on that over the years or?
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point. Uh, it is tricky to medication. The 1.5 million dollar savings was on the moment slabs to do the hybrid bridge design. It was a hundred and twenty two thousand dollar savings for the the roundabout the masonry versus. Yeah, no worries. I just wanted to to clarify. Um, so yes, the it is a little bit tricky to match that that color, but the good thing is is with the color forms and making sure that you're always cutting at those expansion joints, which is those lines that run up and down the wall there. Um, the saw cutting is is really precise now. And test samples of mixtures with with your colors to get it dialed in just right and then hold it up, you know, a dried sample before you do the full pour. Um, so I think that there's a well blended. The other thing is uh, the concrete will have to be sealed uh, probably either annually or every two years, kind of depending on how but weathers and a lot of the the new versus the old patchwork there.
Thank you.
Hey, I have a
Ben, thank you for your work on this. It's great to see the readings done. Uh, as you know, we're we've had a couple accidents on on the uh,
Took us a while to get FPCU to fix a large issue several years back. Um, so I think we need to make sure we're proactive with the businesses as well. Okay, so I'm gonna move on to number six. So um, Chief Simmons is gonna give us an update on some police target news.
Thank you, Todd. I don't know if you can share my screen now, uh, please. I hope everyone's having a blessed evening. See if this works. I hope it works. Can everyone see my screen here? I'm I'm not exactly sure.
No.
Not yet.
If not, I can move on. It's not a big deal. Um, I just wanted to uh, give an update on um, a couple of important things. Uh, first of all, our calls for service uh, for the month of January. Um, on average, we typically see around three hundred calls for service. That includes self-initiated calls from officers. In the month of January of twenty twenty one, we saw six hundred and twenty two calls for service. Um, that included um, thirty five property crimes, um, such as thefts, vehicle prowls, vehicle thefts and burglaries. And one of those burglaries included a uh, a robbery, an armed robbery at Home Depot. Uh, it was a shoplift that ended up being an armed robbery. The suspect ended up uh, pulling out and displaying a firearm um, to the employees as they tried to stop him from walking out with uh, their property. So we're seeing a dramatic increase in property crimes. Um, it doesn't surprise me. It's something it's a trend that's been occurring countywide for some time. I know some of that has been attributed to COVID. However, um, this increase started uh, pre-COVID and um, I would um, say uh, that it it will probably continue to increase. So we're gonna have to find some ways to uh, combat these this increase in property crimes. Um, it was only a matter of time before our our community was affected. Um, so um, next up, I wanted to talk about our hiring. We had such an excellent group of uh, applicants. Um, this go around, uh, it was non-typical. It was non-typical in any department that you see the quality of applicants that we saw. Um, out of the nine applicants, we had a total of ninety four years of total experience between the nine. Um, and these applicants included uh, one deputy chief of police from a department in Colorado, a lieutenant from a department in um, I believe Arizona or New Mexico. Um, and um, you know, it just goes on and on. The the attributes that these candidates had was just outstanding. Uh, we narrowed it down uh, on January twenty seventh, after interviews to five to our top five candidates. And uh, we're we're planning on interviewing the mayor. Uh, Katie and I are uh, planning on interviewing the top five on Friday, February the fifth to see if we can narrow that down um, to um, our top candidate. Um, again, you know, I I it's it was it was such a tough decision. Making this list of the top five, and we literally met for two days and discussed and spread out their applications and looked through. Um, just, you know, everything that they they have to offer for not only the department, but for the community. And uh, at one point Sergeant Jeff Jones said, can we just hire all five? And I said, I wish we could. So with that said, um, in our upcoming uh, our next uh, city council meeting, you will uh, see a proposal for me for one additional uh, hire on top of the one that uh, that we're going to make here uh, pretty soon. Um, so you will see that the next city council meeting. Um, the next thing I want to talk about is the visit to the police department. I believe that's extremely important um, for several reasons. Um, we can have a one-on-one or, you know, if you if you all want to come in a group, um, that works as well. But just to be able to talk face to face and walk you around the police department and show you um, how we utilize the space that we have now, talk about our future needs. It's priceless. Um, and I know there was um, you know, everyone asked for the floor plan, but to look at a one-dimensional plan and not come over and actually see everything in three D and have that discussion, uh, I think it's a little bit unfair and and I don't think it's it's reasonable. So um, I I urge everyone um, to make that appointment uh, with with myself uh, and our officers and come over and speak with us. And we can show you um, some of those uh, some of the things that we're planning on doing and and how we utilize that space now. Um, one last thing, we we've been doing a lot of good things at the department. Uh, wanted just an example of that, and um, I'll wrap it up. Is um, we're having a uh, on the seventeenth of this month, and um, everyone here is invited to come. It's gonna be a great time. Um, we're uh, having a a department-wide training session where we're uh, collaborating with Lutheran Community Services. Um, also um, first responder conferences who uh, focus on uh, law enforcement, health and wellness. And um, the Spokane Regional Domestic Violence Coalition, they're all coming over for um, a collaborative uh, training session for all of us, and we can introduce ourselves for each other to each other. And and there's some big things coming up there as far as that collaboration as well, especially with um, the Domestic Violence Coalition. Um, so that's about it. That's all I have. Um, lots of things going on, uh, other things going on, so I look forward to, and I hope everyone comes over and we can discuss some of those other things um, that we we have going on and our our outlook.
Great. Thanks, Chief. It looks like Mayor Per Tim had a question.
Oh, yeah, a comment. Uh, Chief, thanks. Uh, and for sure, for one, I really appreciate you taking the initiative to put together uh, to have council members and interested citizens come over and see the utilization of that facility. That's something that I've personally been wanting to see for literally years. And for whatever reason, it hasn't done in the past. I'm glad to see you taking initiative to do that. There's been so much talk about in the past several years of the need of the library, and yet there's been no discussion of the need of the police department. Yet the police department is thirty four to thirty five percent of our total revenue that comes in goes to public safety. So once again, I compliment you on doing that. I think it's important at this time that we see what the needs of the police department is and the facility that is needed as we continue to grow in the city. Thanks again. I look forward to getting over there.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along. Um, events for twenty twenty one, um, had Doc already mentioned what Kiwanis was doing, but we're taking a hard look on our event. Um, planning does take a lot of time, and so Jen is gonna give you all an update on twenty twenty one.
So I think at this point, uh, what we're seeing as a trend is many events that are happening in the spring and early summer are being postponed to until summer or late fall. So as a city, I think it's best to just hold off for now on any planning. The problem is, um, you know, if we have an event in June, July, August, it's really difficult to try to start the planning process and then have it canceled. So um, it's it's really complicated to try to decide whether we should plan, should we not? Um, so I think for sure, the Fourth of July is definitely um, something we can do. We did that successfully last year. And actually, on the next council meeting, um, we'll have the the um, the agenda item for the approval for the fireworks for twenty twenty one. But um, you know, until the Fourth of July, it's really hard to plan anything without knowing what's gonna happen with COVID. So um, with that being said, we hope that the Fourth of July, and and again, it was a very COVID-friendly event. It went well. There were no hiccups, no no issues. It it was very successful. Um, we're hoping to have Barefoot in the Park or some fashion of that. And we're talking about moving that and to the uh, Labor Day Labor Day weekend with the symphony. We don't know what's gonna happen with the symphony. But we're hoping to move that. Um, it's the city's twentieth birthday, so it would be a birthday celebration. And we could either have a barefoot compilation on the um, Labor Day weekend, or we could do something different. So if anybody has any feedback on the city's birthday slash Barefoot in the Park slash Symphony, we're kind of hoping to combine um, those events, those ideas and produce a really great weekend on this on the Labor Day weekend, assuming we have Symphony, assuming, you know, all things are good to go for events um, at that point. And COVID is supportive of having people congregating in the parks. But again, um, we welcome your feedback, any ideas you might have. Um, the planning has to start now, and the hard part is we're juggling the planning process with trying to produce something at the end of the season. But yeah, any any ideas you might have would be very welcome. Um, thoughts, that kind of thing. So yeah, we'll see what happens with COVID.
Dan, I was gonna add that also in in concert with the rest of the county and the health district, um, Jen is gonna be dialed into what others, what other community events. You probably saw on the paper today that I think it was Hoop Fest got moved since September. So what we're doing is pretty consistent with what the rest of the county is doing, and that is pushing things out to labor in the summer, early fall. Any questions?
I don't see any.
Okay, moving along. There were several action items that came out of the uh, council meeting, last uh, council meeting. And so one was a library capital budget, and we do have a workshop tonight uh, to cover that. The floor plans for PD and library, I think you all received a copy of that. Uh, PD facility tours, um, you can uh, call Chief Simmons to get uh, time that works for you, and he'd love to show you his facility. And then finally, on the council capital facilities retreat, um, that was the matrix that we worked on at six o'clock. Um, the the two dates that came up were April thirteenth and April twenty seventh. Those are what we call off Tuesdays. I don't know when spring break is at CD. I apologize, but uh, we're hoping that the council could give us feedback next week on which of those days would work for you. And if if we can do it in person, that would be fantastic. Um, or should we plan for it regardless? So
Uh, Katie, I had heard during the discussion that um, there's maybe preference for doing it earlier in March. So when when we um, when we send out the workshop email, in the next couple days, you get priorities. We'll we'll make sure we note that.
Okay, so March is an option.
Yep.
Okay, very good. And then finally, just to close, um, I really haven't given an update on COVID today, but I did want to mention City Hall continues to be by appointment only. Um, the library and police department trailhead um, are all open, practicing safe distancing. I do want to say that I have a call into other city managers and the city administrators in Spokane to find out if what they're gonna do different in phase two. I haven't heard back yet, but as soon as I do, I'll we'll keep council informed. But right now, when we're in phase one, we're just kind of keeping our doors closed. Um, February fifteenth, City Hall and Library will be closed because it is President's Day. Um, it's a holiday, so we're closed that day. Um, but what I wanted to mention is that if people want to make an appointment, they can. Uh, but when we get to phase two, we may be modifying things. So in my report tonight, I have open by appointment through March first. We might change that if we get to phase two. We just don't know yet. So with that, Mayor, that concludes my report.
Great. And I do just want to reacknowledge. I see a couple of hands up um, from from our citizens. We will have a citizen comment period at the end. Um, so it looks like we are open to workshop discussions. So uh, first one is the proposed library capital needs funding, hundred thousand dollars per year. Oh, sorry, councilwoman first. Sorry. Yep.
I apologize. I I forgot to mention something during council reports. May I interject something real quick here, or I can wait till next meeting?
No, go ahead.
Uh, just uh, sorry, folks, I uh, I didn't scroll down on my notes enough, but one more thing I wanted to throw out to the group was uh, there's a there's a House Bill thirteen twenty-three. It's very early in the stages right now, but this bill is related to long-term care service or creating a long-term care services trust at the state level. I just want to more or less bring it to your attention and I can tell you I've run numbers. What this ultimately is, is a payroll tax that would be put on the citizens in the state of Washington in hopes of funding future long-term care needs, long-term care, things like nursing homes or assisted living facilities. And after running numbers and looking at the benefits that it could provide, I strongly believe this is a this was not a well-thought-out bill that went in. And I just urge you to do your research and reach out to local reps. I've already done so and and I said they'd not approve this bill going forward. But that's House Bill thirteen twenty-three. If you want to do your research or feel free to reach out to me if you would like to need more information on the on the numbers and the benefit that it would potentially provide citizens. So I see this a tax with very little benefit to our citizens. So House Bill thirteen twenty-three, strongly urge you to look into it.
All right, thank you. Okay, workshop, Library Capital Needs. I know Jocelyn, I think you're going to just review real quick your slides and then Councilmember Dunn, I'll let you kind of take it from there since you asked for the workshop on.
All right, good evening here in council. Let's see. Did I need to put up those those slides? I don't actually own those slides.
No, if not, that's fine.
Okay, um, so at the last city council meeting, we had a workshop talking about the library facility and possibly the future for when we are built out. And we are bringing back this workshop. We are following up on Councilmember Dunn's request to fund a hundred thousand dollars in the Library Capital Fund for that future capital project. The question was asked, would you like to start allocating the funding? This could be an investment. And when I was asked to provide a number, I said, well, I think a hundred thousand dollars is a nice round number as a start because that could build nicely over time. And so now this is an opportunity for council to discuss, ask questions and so on. These are some notes that RJ has put together, or I guess the next slide. Yes, these are some notes that RJ has that is more in his milieu than mine. So if he'd like to share those with you, that'd be awesome.
No, you're doing great. Just keep going. Now, they just, if you had any questions about the mechanics of how this transfer would work, these are just the notes that I created. We can draft a budget amendment that would be specifically to set this, these dollars aside that would be for a specific use. Only council can authorize its spending. But right now, it would just be to park the money. And only county council could redirect the monies if there's, in the future, if you save money, then after a period of time, you want to invest it in another direction, you have the ability to do that too. So mechanism, if you want to do it this year, we would do a budget amendment for twenty twenty-one. And then we would continue that process of just including it in future budgets. There is indication, we would talk to council if we were in a, we're having revenue stress and we felt that just to keep basic operations functioning, that we could say we're not going to perform the transfer this year and look to future years. So that's that, those are my quick, quick notes.
All right, thank you. Just want to remind everybody before we start the discussion that, you know, our topic is strictly on the hundred thousand dollars being set aside, not on what we're going to do with it, what the long-term plan is. Just want to remind everybody of that. Sorry, Jan B., did you have something? Jocelyn, did you have something else?
Nope, nope, that was all I had.
I think Councilmember Seavers, he directly put his little hand thing up. Did you mean to put that up? Yeah.
I didn't mean to, but I'm happy to jump in.
Well, I, well, you know, Councilmember, yeah, I'd like Councilmember Dunn to kind of start off if that's okay, since his request to put this on. Thanks.
Sure, thanks. To talk to the concept of capital fund and transfer, RJ, do you mind summarizing some other existing capital funds with similar, I'd say, by nature transfer? And I'd, for example, draw attention to like utility undergrounding. Yeah, please just identify a few other capital funds that we have in operation.
Yeah, the utility, the underground utility fund is the the primary one example that we have. That's one we consistently year after year, we'll do twenty-five thousand dollars set aside, just just to see how to build that. We do have a mechanism in place per the ordinance for the, for another portion of capital to be set aside for the library. It equates about sixteen or seventeen thousand dollars a year. So part of their funding from the property tax is to set aside money in their capital fund. And that's what, that's what helps their capital fund go. And those items have been used towards repairing the the roof at the library, computer furniture and equipment needs there as well. But it's it's something we do in the budget year. It's usually a transfer that comes from the general fund to go into these capital funds.
Great. So, you know, I speak in favor of the objective most in that we, I think, recognize the need for change. The library specifically for space and also that we don't right now immediately have opportunity to act, to assert a long-term or an ongoing and recurring incremental contribution, I think, is a gesture that assures an eventual some that would allow us to act. So I believe this is a sound practice and one that I'd like to see us implement in a budget amendment.
Thank you. Councilmember Seavers.
I'll get it eventually. I too would like to speak in favor of this. I, my mayor, I hear your comments on we're not talking about what the project is. And I actually greatly appreciate that. At this juncture, I don't necessarily care what the project is. I recognize there's a need for a project. There's a need for a project. We should set aside funding in preparation for the project. I don't know if it's going to be in a year or in five years. Johnson's laid out some great plans. We've done surveys have been great. I think it just shows that we are going to need a change. And I just speak in favor of budget amendment in twenty twenty-one to kick this off.
Any other comments, discussion from the council? Councilmember Foyer.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'm not opposed or in favor of the suggestion of of changing our budget for the benefit of the library. I'm not in favor of having this, 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 this discussion until after we talk, have our capital facilities plan discussion. Seems to me that we need to take a step back and look at the big picture and really what, where are we going instead? And if, if it's Option A and Option A fits with this discussion, then let's talk about it then. But I think the capital facilities plan needs to come first. Thank you.
Any other comments, Mayor Perchem?
I also agree with that, is that, you know, I feel I have to, I really have to preface this, my statement is that, you know, I've been an advocate of the library long before I became a council member. I've attended practically every one of their their meetings and stuff, have worked hard to try to get donations and stuff for the library. Why I feel I have to say that, because anytime I find in the history of Liberty Lake, if you ever come across that you're not in favor of something, you're immediately chastised by the rest of the individuals and also some citizens. Now, I am not supportive of those moving forward at this, this point. The simple reasons that we have capital facilities that I think take a priority over this. One is Trailhead. The netting is a good example, that the wind destroyed it. It cost us twenty-seven thousand dollars. In the meantime, we lost twelve thousand dollars in revenue that is there. That, do I feel that we should have more square footage for the library? Yes, I've been saying that for a year or two before I ever got into council. And I've not changed my attitude with that. But also, there's priorities. And the priority has to be with capital facilities, where we are and everything else. And to suddenly start changing budget to take X number of dollars to set it aside or something, we don't even know what it's for yet. I think it's very premature with that. We still have to figure out where we're going to come up with funds of the, any budget shortage on the six million dollars. And Trailhead is a huge, huge thing. On a, the library is suffering in space based on what a lot of people feel. But it's not closed down and it's not hurting. Trailhead is a different story, okay? It is somewhat closed down. You know, it is, it is falling apart in many areas. We've spent a hundred thousand dollars to have research done on that. And we've not been able to have any discussion on how we move forward on that. So as much as I'm a supporter of the library, and Jocelyn knows this, this is very premature, in my opinion. Important, but very premature.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurt.
I would speak in favor of a budget amendment for the library. I think that we have had an assessment that recommended more space to meet the needs of our growing community. We've had the same assessment done on Trailhead, but we have not, like Councilmember Foyer and Kennedy have said, not been able to take action on that or have a real rounded discussion on the capital facilities things as a whole. But we also went through the prioritization matrix. And the library was one of the things that we did prioritize. We've heard from community members today and just generally, the library is, to quote, I think it was Tim Olson, the heart of the community. And I believe that. If we're looking for a motion out of the workshop, I'd be willing to make that motion to save money and put aside money for the library, knowing that we don't know what that is going to look like at this moment. But that we do need to do something. And being able to save money for that, whether it's a hundred thousand dollars, whether it's a different amount. I think that we do need to start somewhere. And I think that the library is a great place to start.
Thank you. Councilmember Langford, if you wanted to weigh in on this. Okay, so I'm hearing a little bit of a mixed bag here from everybody. So considering the comments, this is, this is what I'm hearing, that there's interest, that we have to have further discussions on the capital facilities as a whole. So my suggestion would be, and I obviously want to get, get some input on this, is to keep it on the table, have our retreat on capital facilities and then bring back possible resolution or whatever it needs to be at that, after that capital facilities plan. Councilmember Dunn, would you like to, I'd like to hear your thoughts on that.
I think the action on the table is in reference to a incremental, I'll call it, savings approach. It is not the execution of a capital plan. It's not the delivery of a facility. It's a commitment by this group to recognize that eventually we, as a community, need to improve the library. I recognize the need to discuss the larger framework of the capital facilities plan. But that, that honestly can go right along with making some level of a commitment to deliver on the library. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Langford and then Councilmember Kurt.
Thank you, Mayor. This is most certainly a commitment to fund. So what takes place then is that no one's asked the question of at what expense does this hundred, hundred thousand, if that's the figure? What does that come at? Who's going to lose a hundred thousand out of their budget? If administration is willing to take it out of theirs, that's great. You know, we can take it out of employee. We don't need a hundred thousand dollars there, I'm sure. So at some point, someplace, this money just doesn't grow. It just doesn't appear on a budget sheet. It actually affects another operation's budget. So just before we go off and say, hey, yeah, that's a great idea, which it is. Are you for it? Yes, I am. Am I ready to make a commitment to the amount of funding? No, I'm not. Simply because nobody's told us where it's coming from and how often is it going to be repeatable? Et cetera. So I think we do need to look at the larger picture. Kennedy made a good point. Yes, they have needs. But they're not hurting at this point. It's not that we're going to shut the door in their face. But COVID's done a pretty good job of that already. So we can just work with what we have. Let's look at the bigger picture. Let's see, we've been dragging along Trailhead. We've been dragging along the library. And I agree, it's time to make some decisions. But let's go about it intelligently. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurt.
I have two questions. My first question is, is this a question that RJ can answer specific to Councilmember Langford's question about where the money would actually come from?
So I would propose, is that a question rhetorical? I can, I can hold off.
No, no, please, RJ, I was going to call on you for that as well.
No, so we, I would propose that a hundred thousand going with twenty twenty-one would be from the extra savings, the extra cash that we brought in from last year's budget. We exceeded our expectations by almost one point two million dollars. We can set aside a hundred thousand dollars of that. So it would not impact the department's budget. Or at least that would be my, my suggestion.
Thanks, RJ. The next question that I have, because I've, I've said that I am interested in moving this forward, possibly through motion at whatever point we're able to do that, if that's tonight. If I were to consider waiting until we have the capital facilities discussion, what are we going to do then? Are we actually going to, as a council, make a decision and actually move forward? Or are we just gonna, as Mike Kennedy says, kick the can down the road more? Because I, I, I don't want to say, let's wait and let's talk about the capital facilities plan in March and then in April. And then, oh, something happened and we didn't get to it. And oh, nobody's hurting, all that. And I, so I, I mean, I, I hear that. I hear the, having the well-rounded discussion. But I agree with Councilmember Dunn that this is something that we can do. And I'm hearing RJ say that it's not going to take anything away from any of the other expenditures that we currently have. So my question is, why wouldn't we invest now in this and still continue to simultaneously have the discussion about the larger picture issues? We're going to have to save up for the library. We're going to have to save up for Trailhead. We're going to have to save up for these things. So why would we wait?
Thank you, Councilmember Kurt. Councilmember Langford.
Thank you. In response, this money, just because it happens to be left over from last year, doesn't mean that it's free money. That money is still very much assignable to any of the projects. So it's just not laying there with no designation and oh, let's just grab it and run. That money would be a hundred thousand dollars more toward Trailhead. Maybe another repair that we don't even know about yet. And I know you can't go into hypotheticals. But let's look at this before you just jump in and say, yeah, I want to support this for a hundred thousand. Because now you're starting to earmark money. And we've already got revenue through taxation that's been earmarked for all these types of facilities, or at least two of them that I'm aware of, three. So, you know, it's not going to hurt anything. Nobody's saying we don't want to support it. We're just saying, look at it. You have a new capital facilities plan coming up. And if this jumps to the top and it gets that vote, wonderful. No problem. But at least look at it.
Thank you. I've had Councilmember Dunn and then Councilmember Seavers.
Madam Mayor, I would like, sorry. Madam Mayor, I would like to move that a budget amendment be prepared in the amount of one hundred thousand for a capital fund dedicated to the Liberty Lake Municipal Library.
Point of order.
Yes.
I believe it, correct me if I'm wrong, but point of order, this is a discussion, this is a workshop. This is not a decision-making meeting at this point.
Point taken, yeah.
To clarify, if Sean could report, a workshop taken during a public reported meeting can also include a motion. Mr. Bouts?
Yes, I mean, it's just a motion with regard to future action of the staff to bring back a subsequent motion, amendment that would be before the council. Keep in mind that any budget amendment would go through the ordinance process. So it's just a direction to staff to bring something back to the council for further consideration.
So Sean, do we even, for that request, is there even a motion needed? I don't believe.
Not necessarily, but it, it may be for, in this case, better for a direction of staff to know what, which way to go.
Thank you. So, well, we've got a motion on the floor. Well, this is my first point of order, so sorry, guys, struggling with this. So councilmember Kennedy, were you going to speak to your point of order? No? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Is it councilmember Kurt? Sorry, I couldn't hear. Okay, seconded by councilmember Kurt, so discussion. Councilmember Foyer?
I, I, I'm going to be opposing this motion tonight for the simple fact, not that I'm against the library like nobody else here is, not that I don't want to see great things for the library. Part of, part of my hesitation is we have not talked about our capital facilities plan as a whole and what that means to us in the pocketbook. Currently, we have two projects underway over the freeway that we are responsible for $6 million. So I still have yet to hear, and I don't think anybody can give us the answer quite yet, until we get further along with those projects as to how much we're really going to be for those two improvements. So with that, with those two improvements, we may get a bill in the mail that takes everything off the table for five years, have no idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Head of Council, Mayor Proton Kennedy and Councilmember Kurt.
I'm sorry, did you recognize me?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I, I also cannot support that for the simple two reasons. Once again, everybody here is in favor of the library. Let's, let's, let's be honest about that. We spent about $70,000 on this assessment for the library and this council has not spent five minutes on analyzing that or having any discussions whatsoever, none. The other thing that bothers them to me is that why $100,000? That was just a figure that was absolutely thrown out of the air. Why not $200,000? Why not a million? Why not 50? So for me, the challenge is not so much the dollar amount, but the, the thought behind it. Is that we're just grabbing a figure of $100,000 and say, okay, let's, let's move with that? With no discussion, no, no concept whatsoever of the capital facilities? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurt, you're next.
To Mike Kennedy's point, that's what this discussion is. I mean, we're talking, it's a motion on the floor, so we could talk about whether it was $50,000, $25,000, we could pick a number. And I think to be fair, we've had the report for a while. We had a workshop last January. We went through the proposal, Jocelyn made a presentation. I'm actually wondering what else, what else we need to, to move forward with this. RJ is telling us that we have the money to do this, whether it's $100,000 or some other figure. And if we're going to wait on, if we're going to wait on the, the overpass and the bridge to be done, we may as well never talk about this for the next, what, two years? 2022 is when the bridge is going to be done? Are we going to pause everything because of that? Like I, I hear the, I hear and I respect the, that we do have some projects going on. But what I'm hearing from RJ is that we do have the money to do this. One of the other points that was made was that, you know, the money can just sit there and we can just hang out with it. I can see that too, but I think as a taxpayer, I don't want the money just sitting and hanging out. I would like to see it invested in the community. For me, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be the library, but I do hear that the library, again, is a very important part of our community. And I'm willing to invest in that, whether it is $50,000, $75,000. I think that's why we're having this, the discussion tonight and the workshop.
Well, actually, Mayor Proton, I'll get back to you after, councilmember Severs.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I want to speak in just, in complete respect and understanding of wanting to wait for the capital facilities plan discussion. I, I understand where you're coming from and I don't disagree with you entirely. My point here is that I don't see an outcome from the capital facilities plan discussion that is not going to want to fund the library in the future. Mr. Mayor Proton, I, I agree with you that, why is it 100? Jocelyn was very clear, it was a nice round number. And you know, I can respect that too, and just for the sake of moving forward on something, we've had a lot of discussion on the fact that we need a, to expand the library at some point in the, in the future. We've had community input, we've put money towards, towards the survey and I for one do not foresee an outcome because of a capital facilities plan discussion that's going to make me not want to fund a larger library in the future or changes to the library in the future. So for that reason, I don't see a, a need to wait for that. I think that this is a, a great effort tonight to start setting money aside if, and the 2022 budget, we want to set aside significantly more, we can do that. This is just a start. And it, and I think it shows, it also shows good faith effort towards, towards our citizens and towards our library to show, hey, we want to be in support. We don't want to continue waiting months and months to get something started that we are interested in, in investing in our library and, and for all the good that it brings our, our citizens. So I, I just don't see a need to wait on a capital facilities plan discussion. I think a lot of discussions have already happened and, and I apologize, I'm failing to remember. I think it was RJ who mentioned that, you know, this money, even though we're setting it aside for a future library project, we don't know what that looks like. And, you know, again, I don't want to get into details, but, you know, we could sit here and brainstorm what a future library project might look like. I think we could take whatever we save and go toward whatever the project looks like. And it's nice that it's earmarked for future library kind of period. And I think it also perhaps save us or force us to think very critically before we took fund out of that, whether to pay for a road project or something like that, that it would be a real last ditch effort that we'd be in dire straits before we did that. So I like the idea of, of protecting some, some funds for a future library project when that comes around. So for that reason, I just don't see it change, I don't see my opinion changing because of capital facilities plan discussion. I think, I think it's appropriate to start funding this now.
Okay, Mayor Proton Kennedy, I think you're next and I'd like to jump in with a quick comment.
Yeah, I do appreciate that and, and I, and I really appreciate the rest of the council's comments and stuff because quite honestly, I can't disagree with all of them, I really can't. I'm certainly in, in favor of a lot of this. But I mentioned process, a little bit ago, I made a comment. The comment was that we spent about $70,000 on this report. I think 60 or 70,000, we have about 20,000 left over. We've not spent five minutes talking about that report. Now, no disrespect through councilman Kurt's, but you made comment, we've discussed this in January. This is what we discussed in January. This was not what we spent $70,000 for. This is what Jocelyn and the group of individuals came across with some recommendations, but we have not discussed what that was. Now, out of all the council members, I'm the only council member who spent every single meeting at all of those meetings that we spent the $70,000 on. Myself and another council member at the time, we attended those meetings. And we put a lot of time and effort into working hard to get all the information so we could bring it back to the council and the citizens to prove why we need to expand the library. And I'm a little disturbed that we've spent $70,000 and suddenly we're jumping into grabbing any figure without the respect for the individuals who put the time and effort to, to go to all of those meetings and come up with this report of which we've not spent not one minute. So, you know, sorry, thank you.
Okay, so real quick, RJ, I'll let you make your comment. I think you're wanting to jump in here real quick and then I've got something to input and then councilmember Kurt will get to you.
Refresh me which comment I want to make, sorry.
The cost of the assessment?
Okay, so I just want to clarify on the assessment for the library. It's 32,000 is what we actually spent on that assessment, not 70. I just want to clarify that because we, we have repeated that number and it's, we actually only spent about 30, we spent just a little over 31, almost 32,000 on the assessment.
So was the budget 70,000?
Nope, the budget was not 70,000. I, my suspicion might be that, that Trailhead's assessment was closer to that number along with some contingency. And they were doing the two assessments around the same time, so.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, RJ. Actually, councilmember Kurt, if you'd like to go and then I'll, I'll jump in with a quick comment.
Okay, I, I think to address some of the comments that councilmember Kennedy said, yeah, I, I understand that the PowerPoint presentation is different than actually discussing the full report, but the, the PowerPoint and the presentation that Jocelyn did was a summarization based on their interpretation of the report and based on their knowledge of the library, what they felt would work best. So I think that we've had the recommendation from professionals that we engaged in to perform the study. We've heard from the library, the director of the library and her staff about what recommendations they have going forward based on that report and their own understanding of the library and the community. And I think that one of the things that was said was that it's disrespectful to the people who engage in the process to not, I, I can't remember exactly the phrase that, that Mr. Kennedy said, but I also think it's disrespectful to not act on the recommendations that we paid to have taken care of and to continue even after more than a year to not make any sort of progress on following through with that. And so again, I, I support investing in the library. Again, it doesn't have to be $100,000, but I do think we need to start somewhere. So, yeah.
Okay, so, oh, go ahead, Jocelyn.
Oh, you could go first, you've been waiting.
Okay. Meeting, not mine, but I do want to weigh in. Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to note the $100,000 figure I came up with because if we were planning to go about building in 10 years, that would be a million. And it's my understanding that commercial projects, whether it's a renovation or a building, can be pricey and run higher than that usually. So I thought this might be a good nest egg and also in thinking about matching grants that might be available from private or public funders. Often they want stuff up in about that range. But again, it's an amount that council can decide on and we can look at budget stuff with RJ as to what would work long-term and over time, but that was how I came about that number, just so you know.
Thank you. Okay, so just a couple of things. First, I just want to note the time, it's 9:25, we do have a lot of, a lot of things left on the agenda. Second, I will remind everybody that the motion on the floor is actually to, for a budget amendment to be brought back to council for consideration. So the motion tonight is not approving that act, not approving making the change, but of just approving that the budget amendment be brought back for discussion and vote. And third, you know, just, just from my standpoint, you know, just like everybody else and speaks support of the library, I, I look at, I look at putting this money away, sort of like, you know, saving for your kid to go to college. You pretty much know when they're going to go. You don't know where they're going or how much it's going to cost you, but you start saving. So, and you know, I kind of see it's where we're in the same boat here. So at this time, there's no other comments, I'd like to, you know, call the vote on bringing back a budget amendment to be voted on. Mayor Proton?
Sure, I, I need a clarification. Reiterate what we're actually voting on.
Councilmember Dunn, would you like to restate your motion?
Yeah, that the staff prepare a budget amendment in the amount of $100,000 for a capital fund for the Liberty Lake Municipal Library.
So it's not being brought back for a discussion, it's being brought back for a $100,000 capital fund?
To be clear, Mike, when a motion, yeah, as an amendment is brought to this council for a vote, there will always be discussion.
Of course, yes. Believe me, I do understand that, Dan, thank you for pointing that out.
All right, so if there's no other comments, I'd like to go ahead and call for the vote on bringing back, for the staff to prepare the budget amendment. All in favor, say aye. Actually, if you could raise your hand, that would help me a lot. So ayes are any, Dan and Hugh. And nays, raise your hand. One, so we have a tie. So I guess that brings it to me. I think we've only had two other ties since I've been on the council and they were both in the same meeting.
Question?
Mayor Proton? Yes.
Point of order. This would be for Sean. Now, the, the mayor has these, when there was a, a split vote, can vote, but it has nothing to do with there's any funding or money. Does this fall into that category? This is a budget.
Can you hear me?
Sean, now we can.
Okay, sorry. I mistakenly hung up before, when I got back in, I was being muted, so I was trying to talk. So, Mike, your question is with regard to the mayor voting?
Right.
Let me put it this way, given it's a direction to the staff for a, a motion, she could vote on this one, but she would not be able to vote on the amendment. So I, I guess that's the, the question of what direction she wants to take.
That was my question, that was my assumption, I just wanted to hear it from you. Thank you.
Thank you. So given that, I would go ahead and vote in favor of bringing it back for consideration. So we have one more workshop on our plates, ordinance 234, the Code of Ethics, specifically with regards to the definition of immediate family. Oh, perfect, go ahead. Katie's got a slide to compare the two. And the question before the council tonight is, how do we resolve the discrepancy? Which definition are we going to choose going forward? So that it's the same in those documents. Go ahead, Katie.
Could you pull up the slide that Ann forwarded us? So as the mayor said, we have an ordinance related to a code of ethics specific to our city council. The ordinance is 234. And it describes an immediate family as this. Immediate family means the public official or employee spouse, registered domestic partner, child, parent, brother and sister, mother and father-in-law, son and daughter-in-law, aunt and uncle, grandparents, grandchildren or step relatives or domestic partner relatives in one of these relationships. That is defined as an immediate family and immediate family would constitute a conflict of interest. In our personnel manual, immediate family is described differently. In our personnel manual, it includes employees' parents, spouse, child, stepchild, domestic partner, step-parent, brother or sister, mother or father, son or daughter-in-law, grandparents, grandchild or other relatives who live in the employee's home. So the difference is where does the relative live? And in the personnel manual, it says if the person lives in your home, then, then they are part of your immediate family. In ordinance 234, it doesn't identify as living in home as a deciding element to be an immediate family member or not. So the question that we were considering asking the council is, are you interested in changing one or the other? So there's consistency between ordinance 234 and our personnel manual.
And, and looking at this, I believe the action that would come out of this would be to either A, bring back a revision to the ordinance or B, or B, a revision to the personnel manual, or it could be both because as I'm looking at this, not every, not all of the people are included in both. So it could be a change to both, so. Discussion. Councilmember Kurtz.
I could be wrong about this, but I feel like there's a difference between the intent of the ordinance versus the intent for the personnel manual. I mean, I'm asking the question, I think the personnel manual would be more towards like, you know, who would be eligible for FMLA? And who lives that type of a immediate family member versus the ordinance, which is in part, I think, to prevent nepotism. Is that, am I heading in the right direction? So with, with.
So ordinance two thirty-four was put together, part of that part was put together before that. Heidi's on with us tonight, correct? I don't want to, I hate to put her on the spot. Heidi, could you address maybe the intent behind the personnel manual if you're on? Producer? I don't see her. No, we don't. Okay, so while we're waiting on that, Councilmember Kurtz, will the Mayor Proten?
Can I finish my thought real quick? I think that.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. If that's, if the two intents are a little bit different, without further discussion from everybody else just yet, I would be more inclined to keep them separate and different because the intents to me at this point seem different unless we get some clarification from Heidi or based on everybody else's discussion.
Thank you. Mayor Proten Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, when I was looking at this and Katie and I were talking about this in one of our discussions, that for me, I'm trying to look at what's the simplest way we can resolve this. Had a lot to do with the elected official having some sort of supervisory capacity and stuff. To me, it seems logical if we could go this direction is to mirror that part of, to mirror what the employees, what comes under the employees manual. Because I think if that is in there about the household, we can still keep everything else in there, but we certainly wouldn't have the situation where somebody is not in the household or in the household. Because keep in mind, as elected officials, we have no control whatsoever over employees. So I think this is sort of a gray area which really needs to be taken care of, but I think it'd be taken care of very simply.
Thank you. Councilmember Reivers.
Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Proten Kennedy, I want to make sure I understood what you're saying. I'm going to try to restate it because I think you and I are on the same page here that my thought would be that the important factor here is, do they live in the household or do they not live in the household? And that Councilmember Kurtz said, good point. I'll look forward to an HR professional's opinion. But on the personnel manual side, I could see where in the household is very important. I would like to mirror that underneath, underneath ordinance number two thirty-four also. Just on the nepotism side, I think we're a growing city. I think that might loosen the definition under ordinance number two, three, four, just a little bit. So that, for instance, my children, my wife could not become employee of the city, but if my sister who doesn't actually live in the city, but if she decided to apply for a job, it would be okay that she does it. And I, I don't know what other cities do. I'm curious if Katie or somebody had a chance to do any research on what, on what other cities do. I'm just, I'm thinking of, for instance, a city the size of the city of Spokane. I have a hard time believing that they can't have anybody or any family member or grandchild or anybody else employed in the entire city. We're a much smaller city, but I think it still holds true that loosening that definition just a little bit. Say, it shouldn't be somebody within my own household, but somebody that's not inside my household, that's okay. That's, and again, I'm just going to bring up the example, if it's my sister, she's on the other side of town, she doesn't live with me. She forms her own opinions and frankly, I have zero supervision over, over her if she were to work for the city anyways. I think that's a nice distinguishing factor is do they live in the house or not live in the house? And beyond that, I think it is nice to expand, you know, again, I'll look to, look to our HR folks, but maybe expand some specific definitions under there to read much like ordinance number two, three, four reads today, where there are just a couple of other specific relationships named out in there, but key factor being, do they live in the elected official's household or not?
Yes, we're on the same page.
Thanks, Mike.
Any other, any other comments from the council on this one? So it sounds like then what we'll look for staff to do is to clean up the list of the people, the family members. And then, okay, so I'll grab you in just a second, and then take out the, and define that those people need to be in the employee's home. So kind of make, so we will basically have a change to both as I suspected. Am I understanding that right?
Yep, so basically for your consideration, we could bring back an amendment to ordinance two, three, four, identifying the immediate family definition to coincide with the definition that we have in the personnel manual. In addition, we can answer the question that Councilmember Kurtz raised, because I think you're absolutely correct, that the personnel manual is identifying people for FMLA and a whole host of things. And in the meantime, we'll do some research at the city of Spokane. I can tell you that in, not at the elected level, but at the employee level, the, you cannot supervise or manage relatives, someone in your immediate family. I do not know what the city of Spokane says in regards to an elected official and the immediate family. So I apologize, Councilmember Reivers, you had your hand up.
Oh, no, thank you for that, Katie. I just, I just want to reiterate what Councilmember Kurtz was mentioning that I, for one, don't think it's imperative that these match. I don't see them having the same intent. It's nice if it matches, I suppose, but I, I think I just look more to clean up ordinance number two, three, four, to be more specific around in the household.
Councilmember Foyer, did you have a comment? Go ahead.
Yeah, one more time, sorry. So you're suggesting that we add to ordinance number two thirty-four to include, what did you say, Hugh, in the household or the?
Residing in the household.
Yes, specify the household.
So all of two thirty-four plus anybody that resides in the household?
No, I don't know, think of as a plus anybody that resides in the household, I think would be under the definition of those specific relationships.
Sorry, or relatives.
And reside in the household.
Sorry, or relatives who live in the, we're going to add that.
And I would look to Heidi from an HR standpoint to draft that so that it fits what our intent is. RJ?
Yeah, so Heidi is on. I think she's having audio issues. And so Todd, I don't know if you can try to see if it's on our end or not. Maybe. We'll try one more and then if not, we'll address, we'll come back and address your, address this with Heidi more tomorrow, but I know she's been listening because she's, she's emailing me.
Okay, so yeah, so I, so the intent from the discussion is if these types of people, these relationships reside in the same household with, then they are part of your immediate. Yes, they are, right, they are part of your immediate family. If they do not, they, they aren't with regards to the two thirty-four. So again, we'll look to Heidi and the staff to work on that. That's more than a hand up. Oh.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now, go ahead.
Okay, yes, absolutely. It's for FMLA for, I feel like this is addressing bereavement. If you look under the personnel manual list, you don't see aunt or uncle listed. And not all types of bereavement cover aunts and uncles, but aunts and uncles are listed on the ordinance two, number two thirty-four. So if we did add aunts and uncles, then we would be assuming that if an employee needed time off for bereavement, that an aunt and uncle would be considered. And then any relative who lives in the household, your aunt or uncle could potentially be a dependent that you would need to take time off for. So I guess just clarification on if we want to add aunt and uncle to the personnel manual, but that is a hundred percent, I think, the difference in the intent of how an immediate family member is defined.
And I don't see that they need to, for that reason, they may not necessarily have to be identical. Yeah, Councilmember Kurtz.
I think for purposes of bereavement, if that's kind of like where we're really focusing in on, I would support adding the aunt or uncle. I don't know that I, I don't know that they have to live in the house for bereavement leave. I think of bereavement leave where I work and, you know, my dad doesn't have to live with me, my grandparents don't have to live with me if we're offering bereavement leave. You offer it whether they reside in the home.
Right, you're correct. I meant as far as adding to insurance though, or dependent on, like if we offered AFLAC or something like that, you would, they would need to live in your home to qualify.
Councilmember Reivers.
Heidi, I appreciate you chiming in. I would, I would probably stand with keeping these separate. And I, for one, would, would not be in support of adding an aunt or uncle on the personnel menu. I'd rather keep it simpler there. But Heidi, maybe if you want to bring back some thoughts on, or do you, do you believe that we need to change the personnel menus, manual side of this? Or do you think it reads well?
I think it reads well and it covers the general family members that would be included for most things we would. Where we have to look at any other relative is rare and that would be a case by case basis. So I think the way that it reads is, is fine.
Thank you. I, for one, would, would be more in favor of keeping the personnel manual as is and just change, making an update to the ordinance.
So it sounds like we'll have staff work on, work on that and we'll have something brought back to the council.
Will we, we'll move back to proposed wording?
Yeah, sounds good. All right, so.
Thank you.
And at the time, nine forty-four, my guess, we're going to have to entertain a motion fairly soon to extend the meeting past ten. But let's hit the consent agenda. Mayor Proten.
I'm sorry, say that again.
I said, let's, let's go ahead with the consent agenda. We're going to have to do, probably going to have to extend the meeting fairly soon, but let's get through what we can on this consent agenda.
Absolutely, so we're prepared to move on to consent agenda.
Yeah, yeah, and if we can combine any of these and do them in a lump, that would be fantastic.
I will, I will read them extremely fast. Consent agenda, ten A, I make a motion to approve January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, city council meeting minutes.
Second, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Discussion, sorry.
Aye.
Okay, passes. Go ahead.
Very good. Consent agenda, ten B, approve the February second, two thousand twenty-one vouchers in the amount of nine thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and two dollars and sixteen cents.
Second.
Seconded, all in discussion?
Good question.
All in favor, say aye. Oh, yeah, Annie, go ahead.
Aye.
Sorry, quick question.
Fine, we had, we had a question. Go ahead, Councilmember Kurtz.
Um, one of the, it is two oh one transaction number on page four of the check register. There was a charge there for six hundred dollars for the psychological evaluation and I know that that was also on the last check register that we did. I'm, I was assuming that there was, there were two payments made, but I just wanted to check because they were the same amount.
Different individuals. So for the police officers, different police officers.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, no other comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Say, motion passes?
Ten C, authorize, motion to authorize the mayor to sign the mutual agreement, extension with triple A's sweeping LLC for, for street sweeping. The amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars per annum.
Second.
Second, discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 That was three. Hey. All right, Dan, you have a question or are you voting?
No, I'm voting. I find that it's really hard to try and articulate people by name in the voice of I, and so I'm always trying to be direct in using a hand.
Very good point.
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right, any opposed? All right, motion passes?
Ten D, motion to authorize the mayor to sign mutual agreement, extension for one year with Road Products Inc. for crack ceiling. The amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars per annum.
Second.
Second, anybody? Thank you, moved in seconded. Any discussion? Phil? Okay, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we've got hands and ayes, thank you. Any opposed? Not hearing any, motion passes?
Thank you. Ten E, authorize the purchase of X Mark's Staris E-series mower in the amount of seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye.
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 Gotcha. Any opposed? Doesn't look like it. Motion passes?
Ten F, authorize the mayor to sign the purchase agreement with Dave Smith in the amount of forty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-five cents for a Ram three-five-hundred pickup, VIN number five zero two eight zero zero for the operation and maintenance department.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion?
Hey, quick one. Is it the Ram twenty-five-hundred or the Ram thirty-five-hundred? The PO says twenty-five-hundred.
Oh.
Just want to check that. I'm going to, is it the one ton or is it the two-ton? Or, you know, the one ton or the quarter?
These are thirty-five hundreds. That was my bad on the agenda bill.
So it's right on the PO, it's wrong on the agenda bill?
There's a window sticker in here for a Ram twenty-five-hundred, sorry.
You're the market, Dan?
I'm, I'm just like.
Well, we need, we need, we needed to resolve.
That's okay.
Councilmember Rowan.
Yes, are both of these in the budget?
Yeah.
Both of them.
You know, the, the agenda action item is good. I'd say let's go.
No, Andy, are both, they are both included in the budget.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, any opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion passes?
Ten G, authorize the mayor to sign the purchase agreement with Dave Smith in the amount of forty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-five cents for a Ram thirty-five-hundred pickup, VIN number five zero two eight zero two for the operation and maintenance department.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye.
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 Count six, any, no, and no opposed? All right, motion passes?
Ten H, delegate authorities to the mayor to execute encroachment agreement with Trans Canada.
Second.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? I do have one quick question for Sean. I noted in the documents that it said it was effective January thirteenth and the other signatures are on the thirteenth. Is that an issue with us not voting and getting this signed until this week?
No.
Good, great, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right. All right. Any opposed? All right. I have it. Motion pass.
Ten I, motion to authorize the mayor to sign the proposal and contract documentation provided by Judge, Judge Netting for trailer driving range netting repairs, the amount of twenty-two thousand, three hundred and ten dollars, which includes a fifteen percent contingency.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? All right. I have it. Motion passes?
Thank you. Last item, drum roll. Ten J, delegate authority to the mayor to execute the lighting agreement with the Vista for streetlights along Kramer Hit slash Henry Road Overpass and roadway project.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. I have it. Motion passes. Okay. So we have no public hearings, resolutions, ordinances, no emergency ordinances. Now, seeing that it's nine fifty-two, um,
I have some upcoming agenda items.
Yeah. So, so Katie's got some upcoming agenda items and we have to listen to comments. Um, I don't know if we want to entertain a motion to, to extend the meeting now for a, a short amount of time. We also have an executive session scheduled.
Take a motion to extend meeting?
Second.
Councilwoman Ray, did you have a question? No. Okay. All right. So how long, or how long is, are we proposing to extend the meeting, Councilmember Kurt?
Is thirty minutes enough?
More than enough.
Thirty? Okay. So, um, any discussion? All in favor extending the meeting by thirty minutes? Say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So if I, if I remember correctly, if there's, if it's not consensus, a hundred percent, Sean, help me out here. We don't do many extensions.
You're, you're correct.
A hundred percent.
You're correct.
Okay.
You're correct.
So we will see adjourned in seven minutes. So let's talk fast.
Okay. Um, four follow-up items. Mayor, uh, Proton Kennedy requested a rendering of the public yard of the Kramer Overpass. Uh, Mayor Kaminski is looking for some additional information on small HOAs on sidewalks, um, public streets. Staff is going to repair a budget amendment in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars for funding the library. And then finally, we will bring back a revision to ordinance two, three, four that addresses an opportunity for the council to weigh in as to whether or not employee's home determines whether or not they are part of an immediate family. The two other items, um, oh, excuse me, one other item that I know is on the agenda for February sixteenth, and that's related to a discussion of the applicant, um, the process that we're going to use to make this collection. So February tenth is the deadline for, at four P M. to receive applications for the open council position. And then on the sixteenth, we're going to discuss the process to interview and select, uh, a person to fill the council seat.
Okay. All right. So we've got, uh, six minutes left for citizen comments. Do we have any?
We do.
Okay.
S R and Steve Pearson.
Okay. So I believe S R, I don't know if that's spokesman review or not, um, but so S R is, is up. If you can state your, state your name and if you're Liberty Lake resident or not.
Hey, this is, uh, Shane Brickner. I'm, I want to take a second to respond to Tom Stanley's email that was read on the record for the city council and address it directly since it's about me directly. Uh, first and foremost, um, when you look at his letter, he says he took it upon himself, if I remember right, uh, to do a little research on the matter. Um, and he talks about dates, things to that effect. Um, when you look at the paperwork that was signed, he is right in that the paperwork was signed, uh, in its totality for closing for our new house on, uh, ten thirty of two thousand twenty. Uh, the reason for our purchase for our new house was because we were frankly, too substantially outgrowing it. Um, with my wife's dog business to, um, having my daughter and my grandson move in, the size of the house was definitely too small. Um, in September and October, I had actually started talking to close friends of mine about step down, uh, back then, just in relation to how my body was reacting to, uh, everything that was going on and lupus. Um, but where I take great offense, not only to, uh, Tom Stanley's message, but to other individuals in the community that have been, um, making up their own assumptions as to why I stepped down. Um, a lot of the theme of it was that in fact, I believe Tom said, referenced it in his email, was that he, he had found what he had found was astonishing and probably the real reason, uh, that I had stepped down and resigned. Um, I take great offense to that. Number one, it, it's one thing for you to call me a liar, but when you start calling my family a liar and my doctor's a liar, um, I, I take great offense to that. Uh, a hundred percent offense to that, and you should be ashamed of yourself.
You.
Yeah, exactly. Um, so when you, when you talk about the blood, the heart issues, any one of you, any one of you can Google what a sixty to a sixty-five millimeter
Forty-three seconds.
What a sixty to sixty-five millimeter drop means in blood pressure, and it's not good.
Say out in your, out in your garden.
Can you please mute Mr. Peterson? Thank you.
If I ain't talking to you, so shut it.
Let's be respectful of everybody who's on this call.
I'm trying to be respectful, but I can only turn my cheek so many times.
I'm not saying you're being disrespectful. I'm saying, you, you have the floor right now. Give, give the floor an extra ten seconds for this interruption.
But what Tom doesn't allude to in his letter is that I had actually signed, um, to have a, uh, apartment here in Liberty Lake back on eleven-five, because it took a while for him to get back to me. Um, and he references that I had, uh, accepted offers, um, earlier in the process, but as we all well know, accepting an offer also comes with inspections, appraisals, and shift of offers based off of that appraisal. So it's not just that you accept an offer. Uh, secondarily, um, Tom also references in his letter, the whole use of the city logo being used inappropriately, and I believe that him and Dan Dunn were very passionate, uh, as well as the former mayor, um, about whoever was doing this was held to the highest, uh, uh, trial possible, if you will, and held to the highest punishment possible. Well, in fact, it was completely investigated by the police department, um, to see who had done it. It was determined who had done it, and that individual admitted to doing it. And
Excuse me, Shane, I, I apologize. We're at your three minutes and we're actually at the end of the meeting. Um, we have one minute. Um, I believe we had one other comment. I, I apologize. If you want to expand on your comment, if you want to send it in to Anne, she can read it into the record of the next meeting. Um, I do believe, um, Steve Pearson wanted to speak, but we just hit our ten o'clock and we
You extended the meeting.
The meeting was not extended.
Madam Mayor, you extended.
The meeting was not, the meeting was not extended. We are out of time. Meeting's adjourned.
We have an executive session.
The meeting was not extended. Mike, we, we do have an executive session. The seven P M. meeting is done. Yes. Oh, but we can saw the executive session?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Log off. We'll all back in the executive session. Thank you.